Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And we'll swing back to Counselor Leung. And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Alrighty, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Counselor Hoy, additions or deletions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of additions and deletions and corrections to the agenda.
Second by Nanki, any discussion?
We have item 5B. We have a correction to several, to the year on the agenda and also on the staff report in several places. And item 6.0 has been removed from the agenda as it's something that council previously dealt with.
Alrighty. Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Nordike? Counselor? Counselor Lewis?
Hi.
Counselor Kazer?
Hi.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Counselor Nanki?
Hi.
Counselor Leung? Is absent. Counselor Osick?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. A motion passes. We have one proclamation. I want to thank Counselor Nordike for bringing this one forward. We will get underway. Whereas we commemorate August 26, 2020, as Women's Equality Day, when many American women gained the right to vote with the ratification of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution. And whereas Oregon was an early leader in the women's suffrage movement and in the passing of the 19th Amendment with organized activity beginning several decades earlier in 1870 with the formation of local suffrage associations. And whereas in 1920, both chambers of the Oregon Legislature unanimously adopted House Joint Resolution Number One, introduced by Representative Sylvia Thompson of Hood River, making Oregon the 25th state to ratify the 19th Amendment. And whereas adoption of the 19th Amendment did not guarantee suffrage for all women, including Native Americans, who did not gain the vote until 1924, Pacific Islander Americans in 1952, and African Americans, and Latino Americans until the passage of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and 75. And whereas today, women are active in local, state, and national government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers promoting equity for women and girls, access to health care, labor protections, and adoption of Title IX, society has benefited from these resolute American suffrages. Therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim August 26, 2020, as Women's Equality Day and urge all residents to join the city in this special observance. And receiving the proclamation are Joyce Zuck, the Salem Branch of the AAUW president, Mickey Varney, Salem Branch AAUW past president, Dolores Mulnarzey, Salem Branch AAUW membership vice president, Betsy McDowell, Salem Branch AAUW funds VP, vice president rather, and Gloria Holland, Salem Branch AAUW member. So would any of your ladies like to speak on this? Joyce, would you be interested if you're there? There you are.
Yes, I'm here. And yes, thank you so much to Counselor Vanessa Nordike and to you, Mayor Bennett, for observing, for doing this proclamation so that the City of Salem can observe this very important historic event. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you very much for this. You know, I think about it. My grandmother was born in 1895, and she was the first woman to receive a PhD out of Yale in physiological chemistry. And she wasn't even able to vote at that time. So this is pretty amazing.
It's great. Dolores?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, for taking this historic event and honoring women that have come before us. And thank you to Councilwoman Vanessa Nordike for her contributions. And as a member of AAUW, I am pleased to work with her. And I just want to thank Salem for, it's a city of peace, and now it's the City of Women's Equality Day.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Is Betsy McDowell or Gloria Holland here as well? Alright. Vanessa, did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to thank the American Association of University Women for bringing this forward. And thank you ladies so much for your, all your work and support. I know you guys do a lot, particularly to promote women and the next generation of women leaders. So thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Gloria Holland, I can't see you, so I was unaware you wanted to... There you are.
Right here.
Go ahead.
I'm with the others in, thanking you so much for doing this. My grandmother, Lizzie Clinton, voted in that first election after the 19th Amendment was passed. And we have come so far since then. And voting has always been such an important part of my family tradition. I have voted in every election that's come along since I was 21. It was 21 back then. And my daughter, who is now 45, proudly has voted also in every election. So, and we just have so many women doing so many more things. So this proclamation is very relevant. Thank you so much for doing this. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Great. Just one last call. Betsy McDowell?
There she is.
You need to come off of mute, ma'am.
Do you need to unmute? Thank you.
There you are.
Yes, I'm here. I appreciate your words. I appreciate your support of women in general. It's meaningful across our city. We feel it. We need it. And as our city is evolving, this proclamation, I think will stand in a very good historic context. There's a lot going on right now. Women need the support and the recognition. Appreciate it, Mayor.
You're welcome. Someday the ERA?
We can hope.
Okay.
Cross your fingers. Illinois has to get on it, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Council manager comments. Any comments from councilors? Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of items. On the 4th of August, I was very pleased to attend a body camera rally at the Capitol and heard very compelling stories, firsthand accounts from residents of Salem regarding their interactions with the police and their feelings on the necessity of body cameras. And I just wanted to mention that. And I encourage all councilors to maybe seek out people who were at that rally and hear their stories. They were really compelling, and I'm really glad I went. And also, I wanted to mention that today, the mayor and I, along with Salem Housing Authority and city Salem staff, were very fortunate to attend the ribbon cutting for Redwood Crossings. That's a permanent supportive housing that you've heard speak about on numerous occasions over the past two to three years. And that has finally, that project is finished, and residents will be moving in. And that'll be for residents who have been chronically homeless, who often will have other existing issues, whether it's a mental health issue or physical health issue, that have been chronically homeless and in desperate need of service. And this is not just a facility for people to live in. This is going to be a home where people can live forever potentially. And it is such, was such a beautiful building. The first time I visited it was a couple of years ago, when it was, before we had started any work on it. And the whole area was really overgrown, neglected, and in very sad shape. And today, it is a beautiful addition to North Salem out on Fisher Road. And I just want to say again, thank you to Nicole Utes and all of her staff at the Salem Housing Authority for doing such an amazing job on that project. It wouldn't have come to fruition without their hard work. And I'm very grateful because it will impact lives. It will save lives. And it's, it's a really great, great thing. I encourage everyone to get out there. I think they're going to have one more opportunity for councilors to tour it before it opens. And I think you should be seeing a scheduled invite for that coming up really soon. I really encourage you to do it and see what's going on out there.
I really want to second your comments, Counselor. That was, it's a remarkable building. It is much, it is much more than I expected in terms of its quality, the completeness of the project, the kind of services that are going to be offered. This really is, we've worked on it for three, four years now. And to see it in completion and being part of our Housing Render Assistance Program, I really appreciate the work that's been done by the, you all on the Housing Authority, our Housing Authority staff, as well as our urban development folks in the city council, along with just outstanding support from Salem Health, Arches, Kaiser Permanente, and the list just goes on. It's Pacific Source. There have been a tremendous number of organizations, public and private, involved in this. So it really is a remarkable collaborative effort that has come together in a truly, both beautiful and, as the counselor mentioned, an absolutely life-changing building. This will, this will really affect many people's lives over the years. So congratulations to you all for the work you've done on it. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree with all of that for sure. I would also add that I was not available for the August 4 body cam discussion, but I've had numerous conversations and look forward to more along those lines. I just want to take this moment to remind folks that compared to some agendas tonight, it looks pretty light. But I just want to remind folks out there who don't tune in to every single city council meeting that we have, that we have a lot of items that are in the hopper that are going on and we are doing work on, even though they're not on the agenda tonight. We have a climate action plan in the works. We have a work session on policing in the works. We have a performance audit on policing, including tactics, training, equipment like body cams and things like that in the works. As I understand it, today is the last day for the request for proposals for the performance audit. Because obviously, you need to have a qualified auditing company to do something of this magnitude. So I just want to remind folks that we have a lot in the hopper, and there will be plenty of opportunity for public comment along the way. So please keep those emails coming. Keep the invitations to events coming. Please keep us engaged. And we encourage you to stay engaged as well. I firmly believe that even though things don't happen overnight, if you want lasting change with buy-in from stakeholder input, then it cannot be done overnight. The other thing I would encourage people to keep an eye on is the legislature. The legislature is going to have a special session, and there are some police reform bills in the works there as well. And I haven't looked at those bills yet, so I can't comment and won't comment on those right now. But whatever changes the legislature might adapt, might adopt, could have statewide changes. And so rather than have a patchwork quilt of policing and what's okay in one city or another city, let's make sure to take a careful look at, if you're interested in policing reform, make sure you check in with your representatives in the legislature and make sure that your voice is heard there as well. Because it's not just Salem PD. There are county, there's county law enforcement. There's the Oregon State Police. There are lots of different law enforcement agencies out there. And the legislature has a great deal more power than we do in many respects when it comes to police reform. So I encourage you folks, if you're concerned by what you're seeing in terms of white supremacy and other things, that is one of many ways to stay engaged. But in the meantime, I look forward to working with my constituents and hearing from you guys. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. At the last city council meeting, I agreed, I was offered, or volunteered by the mayor to look into the situation with the West Salem Neighborhood Association. And I'm going to start by saying that the following day, my brother from Georgia came, and I spent a week with him. I hadn't seen him in five years. And then my wife and I went away for a few days last weekend. So I wasn't really able to put, put too much time into it. But I do have a, oh, and I'll try to be quick, a report, kind of a chronological order of where I think the situation is and where it needs to go or might go. I'm going to start with the Monday, June 15, West Salem Neighborhood Association meeting. And as we all know, the middle of June was a very extremely tense and challenging time for everybody, not just in Salem, but throughout the country. There was a substitute agenda put out a day before the meeting. The purpose of that substitute agenda was, and in capital letters, to vote to oppose defunding police and to dedicate additional police resources to West Salem. And it was scheduled to be voted on at that meeting on Monday, June 15. Needless to say, that brought a great deal of attention. There was about 40 people in attendance. That, that particular language was never, never brought forward as a motion. In fact, there were three different motions that went through the process that evening with a great deal of discussion and heated discussion. And in my personal opinion, inappropriate, unprofessional, and unacceptable performance by the vice chair of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. You can't, as a leader, look somebody, as we are here, and refer to them as clueless. And that contention continued throughout the meeting. It was very heated on all sides. The final motion was, "West Salem Neighborhood Association supports continuance of Salem Police Department in West Salem and adjacent areas." To follow the discussion, the vote was held, and it was tied 13 to 13. The chair of the Neighborhood Association cast the deciding vote, and it passed 14 to 13. The very next day, there were complaints filed with the city about code of ethics violations. And I was glad to see that. Also, starting the next day, there was mass quantities of conversations and postings on Facebook that further irritated, riled up, and made the situation worse. Three days after the meeting, the West Salem Neighborhood Association Chair formed an ethics committee to look into the complaint that had been filed against the vice chair. I'm going to say right now that the members of that ethics committee, in my opinion, as a 20-year participant in the West Salem Neighborhood Association are beyond reproach. The chair was Jim Allheiser, who was the past chair for two years. The vice chair was Mickey Varney, who is the chair of the Parks Committee and also on the city's Parks and Recreation Board. Evan Sorus was a member of the Ethics Committee, and Evan is also a past chair of the Neighborhood Association and works with Representative... Thank you. And lastly, E.M. Easterly, who I fondly refer to as Mr. West Salem Neighborhood Association. He's been on there as long as I know. The credibility of those four folks is there, clearly there. They looked at the situation and, quite frankly, understandably, tried to punt to the city. As we heard in our last meeting, that didn't go well. They did formally send a letter to the City of Salem requesting that the city intervene and do an ethics investigation. The city sent back a letter the very next day saying, no, can do. It's my understanding that the Ethics Committee has now been reformed, and that those folks are now looking at the situation, recognizing that they need to make a decision. There are, I'll put it this way, lots of anxiety. The West Salem Neighborhood Association, in my opinion, is a very solid neighborhood association. There have been times where there have been heated discussions. You know, I take objection to being called a gang member because of views that folks share with the, with other West Salem Neighborhood Associations. But I do want to point out that it was the gang in 2017 that included the city's code of ethics into their bylaws. As far as where to go next, as I mentioned, the issue has been sent back to the West Salem Ethics Committee, and that recommendation from them should be coming out any day. The meeting on Monday, September 21st, first, is the day where nominations will be accepted for the officer positions in the Neighborhood Association, and the elections are coming up in October. There has also been, I might add, a human rights violation complaint filed with the city. And it's my understanding with Gretchen Bennett that that is going, has been received and will be looked at. You know, I guess I'm going to end, and I don't usually quote Counselor Anderson, or not Anderson, but city attorney. But in his letter to Mr. Chambers denying the city's ability to intervene, he ended by saying, "I hope that the West Salem Neighborhood Association will be able to amicably resolve this issue and continue its service to the city and the residents of West Salem." I believe that the West Salem Neighborhood Association will do just that.
Thank you, Counselor. That's very helpful. Really appreciate the information. It sounds like it's on track right now to, at least toward a resolution. So that's, that's good to hear.
For this issue, but I can guarantee you, there will be more.
Of course. They're not the only neighborhood with issues. These associations have them every once in a while. Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, the city manager.
Thank you. Thank you. As council knows, the state legislature was poised to assist the city with capital funds for our drinking water system, and then was unable to proceed because of the very severe decline in lottery revenue. Well, thanks to the efforts of Senator Courtney and the entire Salem area delegation, the legislature this evening is considering capital funds to assist our regional water system. The legislation that's being considered will bring a little over $20 million in state general obligation bond funding for capital projects for our water system. These improvements will ensure that the city's capability as a host city will be able to continue to meet the state government's drinking water needs. The improvements will add to our system's resiliency and efficiency, and is a, and will be a direct result of some outstanding state and city cooperation. As I understand it, the Senate will be, will be meeting this evening considering the bill. And we are very confident that we'll be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I want to personally thank you and Peter Fernandez for the work you've done in cooperation with Senator Courtney's office putting together. And particularly, I think one state office holder we don't always talk about is the state treasurer, Tobias Reed, really was of tremendous assistance in putting this together over the past several weeks in advance of the special session. So hopefully, we'll be successful tonight, and these projects will move forward. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a follow-up to City Manager Powers. I think that's great on the water situation. I also know that we were hoping to get some funds to help us work out some arrangements that we can deal in a more efficacious way with the homeless problem we've got in our city. And there was hopefully some funds that were going to be expended to us, or given to us, so we could use maybe to purchase some property for a low income, a low barrier, excuse me, a low barrier shelter. I wonder if you or the mayor know, are those plans on track for this legislative session or not?
Not for the special session, I don't believe. But I think looking forward to, if there is another special session, and certainly to the regular session, this continues to be an issue the legislature, the legislative leadership is well aware of, and, and I think continues to have their commitment to us and other cities on these kinds of programs. So I think we're on track. It's just not going to, it didn't happen last session, and it just wasn't the kind of project that fit the kind of funding that Mr. Powers talked about.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. I know we want to keep, keep pushing the legislature to get this money and hope.
Oh, yeah.
More walkouts.
Absolutely. We really need it. Okay? Alrighty, we'll move on then. And I apologize, I can't remember why I keep putting proclamations ahead of counselor comments. I can't seem to.
Mr. Mayor, I think Counselor Nordike wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Nordike. Did you want to comment again?
No worries. Not a comment, but since the city manager mentioned water, I still get plenty of constituents who ask me from time to time, is the city taking reasonable steps to ensure the safety of our water supply during summer temperatures? Can the city manager give us a quick overview in terms of what the city is currently doing to test the water and ensure that we have safe water to drink?
Certainly, and perhaps with hope from Director Fernandez. As a result of our experience of several summers ago and our pre-existing testing of the Detroit reservoir, we knew and know when there will be an increase in the presence of toxins and sinotoxins. And when we first start getting an indication of a toxic bloom, we increase our testing and then prepare to add our current treatment to make sure the sinotoxins do not leave our wastewater treatment plant. Right now, we're using powdered activated carbon. The ozone treatment facility that council has approved is underway and on schedule, but is not online for this summer. So we are using powdered activated carbon and chlorine, both of which are removed before the water leaves the treatment plant and enters the distribution system. So so far, we've beaten back the little buggers this summer. Peter can comment on whether this summer has seen a bigger increase in the reservoir of toxins than previous summers. Most importantly for me, yes, we've beaten back the toxins, and they have not, at any amount, been able, been able to leave our treatment plant.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Counselor, I, we test very frequently, both up at the reservoir and at the plant, and those results are posted on the city's website as soon as they are available, so people can keep track of that. In response to the manager's question, we've actually had, there had been toxins up in the reservoir. They've been less than in prior years. So we've been very fortunate that we have not had the issue here in advance of having our ozone contact chamber in place. That construction is well underway. We expect to have it online in March and ready for next toxin season. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I met with Director Fernandez the other day as well and asked several questions about that in preparation for the Water Wastewater Task Force. The question that Counselor Nordike offered on the upfront was because of the extreme summer temperatures, but it's, it's not solely based on temperature that we see the sinotoxin outbreaks, and we'll see them as early as March at times. It's due to a lot of factors, and we had the prediction lab actually putting models out there to see how well we predict. And I'd asked Director Fernandez about the reliability of those, and those results are coming out very well. But there's a ton of variability. But there's a ton of variables in, in the watershed, and overall, you know, this is a pretty decent year. Temperature-wise, drawdown on the reservoir, which a lot of people have commented on in regards to phosphorus availability, which may feed the cyanotoxins as well. And a good year, and then next year, we're going to be looking at treatment where absolutely nothing can get through, depending on, on how we operate that system, and that's something that Council will have to kind of weigh in on as well as, do we operate similar to what we do now with the powdered activated carbon? Or do we run the ozone system 100% of the time, or only during certain periods of the year? Because it will affect taste, as Director Fernandez said, and, and when people see something or taste something different, then they get all concerned. And there's still people like, they're out there buying bottled water, and our water is still some of the best in the entire nation. So just wanted to add that piece in.
Thank you. Counselor Kaiser?
Thanks. Just changing topics, I wanted to go back to some comments Counselor Nordike made earlier and Counselor Hoy. I was also invited to the rally for police body cameras, and I was not able to make that as well, but I wanted to say that I stand in support of those. And going along with that, we've been receiving a lot of emails and correspondence for body cameras and a whole bunch of things. And what I've kind of come to realize as, as I've engaged with people is, this is, this is a lot of, for a lot of people, this is their first time ever engaging with their government. And I know that that can be very complex, because government is complex. It's, it's a multi-layered system of local and county and state. And I try to provide education as much as I can about who, who does what and what jurisdiction. And I know that can be very confusing to folks, and I want to encourage them to, to stick with it, but also have patience. Because we, we don't run everything. The city's not responsible for, for every program. And you might find yourself having to contact somebody else, and that's, it's just kind of the, the way government is. And for those of us who work in government professionally, like I do, you understand that even more, and can become very frustrated even more with that and the multi-layers of that and the controls. But what I've come to learn over my career is that the controls are in place for a reason. Like Counselor Nordike said, you have a process for a reason, and that's to protect the people, the citizens of Oregon. It's to protect the process, and it's ultimately to produce the best outcomes that we can. So I think we will get there with, with body cams and, and other things that, that people are requesting, but it does take time to do it, and, and taking time doesn't mean that we don't support it. It means that we have to go through our paces of what the, the citizens have, have voted on over the decades, the century, essentially of our, of our state.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Alrighty, we'll move on then to public comment. Gary Oberry?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I wanted to speak to an item that's on the consent calendar. It has to do with the, the project on the Broadway, Broadway at Pine Street. So I think maybe that'll come up later, but I sent some written testimony in to the Council, and you can read that for yourself, but I wanted to, I guess, just go over a few points there. So my written testimony talks about many reasons why this project isn't good for the Highland neighborhood. Impacts of Josie's Restaurant, the cafe there, less space for trees, benches, you know, other, other amenities. The, I think the right turn lane's gonna increase speeds around that corner, certainly. Just through the whole intersection, it gets bigger. Let's see here. And I think that project invites more traffic on Broadway, invites more, and more traffic on Pine Street. Those are kind of counter to, to, I think, what's good for the neighborhood there. I offer again that more of the traffic should be used in Liberty Street if they're going very far. But really, I guess what I wanted to discuss more here this evening was kind of the last point of my written testimony. Just talking about how this isn't really just a benign decision for this. It's talking about the northbound right turn lane that's proposed on Broadway to turn right onto Pine Street. So there are financial impacts to it, long-term financial impacts. So, yeah, the larger, you know, it becomes a larger street, a larger intersection, more expensive to maintain. You have more pavement on the ground, you have more drainage infrastructure, you have, you have more paint on the road, more expensive traffic signals, more street to sweep, more street to plow. It's just, it's a bigger road. So, so while I think that the right turn lane will do more harm than good to the Highland neighborhood, I'll conclude my points here by calling on our city to be more strategic when developing capacity enhancements like this. We can't continue to expand our street system with projects that offer no increased tax revenue, no improved livability, no improved maintenance outlook. So let's build, let's only build these expensive right turn lanes where we really need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone have any questions? Yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Oberry, for coming down. I was sort of intrigued, well, first, Gary, you say P E F your name. What does that stand for?
I am a professional engineer, so I, I do this kind of work all day long.
And including traffic work like this?
Yes, I do a lot of traffic analysis. I do, yes.
Okay. Then you indicate that part of that issue here is it might end up encouraging more traffic on Broadway, more non-local traffic. I wonder if you could talk a little bit to that in terms of what other ways do people have to get to Kaiser, or to the freeway, or to the Parkway, or any other ways other than Broadway, and how you think that the right turn lane would encourage that?
Yeah, well, it, it, the right turn lane just makes, yeah, that Broadway intersection, Broadway and Pine, much bigger. I think those, yeah, the, the traffic that's going towards Kaiser, towards I-5, really should be using Liberty Street. Right now, if, you know, if Broadway is moving kind of fast, they, some people might say, well, I'll just take Broadway since it's nice and fast and easy, and, oh, look, it's a little extra wider than it used to be. I'll just jump on that, and, you know, but really, they're, they're going through the neighborhood. I think Broadway used to be a state highway. I don't, don't quote me on that, but it, you know, it's not a state highway. It's, you know, Liberty and, Liberty, two blocks over is a state highway now.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Hoy, we're gonna, we'll have you complete with Gary Oberry. Next is Angela Oberry, and then Kathleen Dewanna. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Oberry, do you, I was curious, is your primary objection just to the, the northbound right turn lane? Or do you object just to the whole project in overall?
Thank you. I, I would like to clarify that. I, I, no, I just object to the northbound right turn lane. The rest of the project is very good. So the rest of the project will reduce Broadway Street, you know, from four lanes. It'll, so that it'll convert it to three lanes. You'll have a left turn lane in the middle. It's a lot safer. I think, yeah, reducing crashes by 40, easily 40%, according to the numbers that I'm looking at. But the right turn lane is, is counter to all of that.
Thank you.
Not sure who's calling on. Calling on.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a question. Thank you. Thanks, Gary. I have two questions. So first is, are you opposed to the decision before Council tonight, which is to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT to take over the administration and management of this project? That's the first question. Then my second question is, what do you propose then, if there is no right turn lane? Because the lanes at Pine and Broadway have to terminate someplace in order to accommodate the road diet north of Pine. So what would be your, your recommendation for how to handle the two lanes that are now south of Pine Street? Because one of them's gonna have to terminate somehow to, to accommodate the, just one travel lane north of Pine Street.
Okay. Yeah, to your first question, I was under the impression that this, this vote here with the Council was to enter into an agreement about the right-of-way purchases. And so I'd say no, that there's no point in engaging ODOT in right-of-way purchases if, if they don't need the, if they don't need to purchase that, the, the space for that right turn lane. Maybe there's other right-of-way, you know, needs on the project, and that would be okay. But I would hope that, that the Council would give city staff some direction on this issue regarding that northbound right turn lane, so that we don't engage the owner of Josie's Cafe and perhaps starting to buy right-of-way already, if we're not sure that we want that right turn lane. And to your second project, to your second question, yeah, so that the roadway width there along Broadway is, is, is wide enough for four lanes? Or it, it could be converted to the same way that the Broadway north of Pine Street would be converted to three lanes? You know, so there'd be a center turn lane, two through lanes, and then bike lanes on, on either side. So, so I think that section fits very nicely in there, south of Pine Street. It, it would look pretty continuous to there. So I, I don't believe that Public Works would have an issue with, with how that would look, you know, without the right turn lane. Yeah, there would just be a single through lane, you know, northbound on Pine, on, on Broadway. I think it would be okay.
Any others? Right, thank you, Gary, very much. Want to scoot over and let Angela?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Angela Oberry. I'm, I live in Ward Two, but I'm a former resident and forever friend of Highland neighborhood in Ward One. So, yeah, I'm commenting also on this same thing. So I'm very much in favor of the road diet. And Gary's been showing me the numbers, and I, I think that's great. But I am very opposed to the idea of purchasing land and widening that intersection to add the turn lane. And I have two points of opposition. The first is, when we add that lane, widen that intersection, and that's going to increase risks for folks who are living and working and walking right in that neighborhood. And those of us that are familiar with that neighborhood know that just to the north of that intersection, there are some homes, but there's also some really large apartment complexes. And a lot of those families are on foot daily to walk to the school. Their access of their local city park is south of that intersection, so they have to walk across that intersection. And then there, of course, are some of the businesses right there that they access. So that's increasing their risks to help somebody move faster through the pace, place where they live. And probably most distressingly about this is just three blocks from this intersection, right at this very moment, we are constructing as a city a traffic calming measure at the, on Pine Street, at Pine and Maple, to slow down traffic at Pine. So we have a project underway to slow traffic on Pine, and three blocks away, you add a right turn lane, which increases speed. It doesn't seem, it seems at conflict, right, to do what the Council has already improved to enhance neighborhood livability. We're now in conflict with that, just right there at that same point. The second point of opposition is I actually spoke with the owner of Josie's. And it's a beloved little diner. I used to take my grandfather there for breakfast when he was living with us. And I, when I called her last month to ask her, you know, how do you feel? How, as the owner, how do you feel? Her response to me was, "Well, the city has to build it because they're building the new bridge." So I told her that, no, there is no third bridge that is being planned or built, and so that is not what this would serve. So I just spoke with her actually yesterday morning as well, and she explained to me that she'd gotten a letter from the city about this meeting. She did not feel as if she had the capacity to email, we tried to talk about computer use, or to attend this meeting. And so what she said to me was, "Angela, could you tell them? We don't want this. We don't want the right turn lane." And I'm, she said, "I feel like it's unsafe. It's bad for my business. Tell them I don't want it." And so again, I just think that I'm all for the road diet, but this widening of the intersection is gonna really hurt the livability of this beloved neighborhood that we're trying to keep together, and trying to make it so that those folks can have, you know, neighborhood livability with their everyday lives. So that's what I got.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Kathleen Dewanna.
And turn on.
You're on.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and members of Council, and thank you, Angela, for that comment about livability. I share the same theme, and I'm addressing Agenda Item 5C. Dating as far back as 35 years ago, the city has grappled with the concept of a path through Pioneer Cemetery a number of times. Each time, the city council said no, choosing to protect Pioneer Cemetery and choosing to protect the safety of the city's citizens and visitors. Pioneer Alley originally submitted a plan for development that included an alley access for vehicular traffic and a designated path to Pioneer Cemetery. Please take a good look at the site plan in my written testimony. We were turned down. The city council rejected the plan for a path. The city's rejection was strongly supported by the community's reaction to protect Pioneer Cemetery. As you know, the city ultimately approved the plan that is currently developed without public access. In other words, regarding the Pioneer Alley development, the city said no to a pedestrian path two different ways. The difference between considerations for a path previously and now is that Pioneer Alley relied on the city's decisions for no path to the cemetery and built accordingly. The city-approved development no longer accommodates public access through this area. Moreover, the city's easement cannot place an unreasonable burden on Pioneer Alley's servient land. It's a model pocket development, a welcoming and livingable, livable community as it is, as it was designed. A path through it would ruin its livability. There's another difference this time around as well, and that is Pioneer Cemetery's status on the National Register of Historic Places. Also, the topography of the cemetery itself is not conducive to a pedestrian path. As a political sub of the state, the city should also take heed of the state guidelines for path walkways. It is unrealistic to pretend that a path will be for exclusive pedestrian use. Wheels and dogs will be attracted to any path through Pioneer Cemetery, as they are now through City View Cemetery. Further study that focuses exclusively on pedestrian paths through either is in conflict with the state guidelines. If there is any further study, the study needs to develop all other options. I have concerns about the city's process and the city's rush to judgment without the public input the community has promised, has been promised. These are real property rights here that can't be extinguished or burdened without due process. The matter has been decided. Pedestrians are precluded through Pioneer Alley. It's time to stop refighting the battle behind us. Pioneer Alley LLC respectfully requests that you remove Option 5 from further consideration. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any, any, are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Not a, not a question, but Kathy, a comment. I've read all of the information that you said, and it is sympathetic as I may be and agree with you. I, I do have to mention that your, your statement that the city was involved, the city council's involved with backroom deals, is, is a comment that I can no longer accept from citizens about this city, and I would encourage you to leave that part of your testimony out. You have a lot of credibility with everything else, and you don't need to go there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that feedback. I'll be more careful.
Kathy, are you, is your testimony then leaving open the City View Cemetery than connecting with John Street? I, I want to make sure I understand.
I, I don't believe either of those options in five are viable.
Okay.
I, I don't believe either of those are viable. Part of the topography, you have to realize that even at the end of John Street, you have to, there's about three feet of rise in elevation. And if you wanted to get the type of ADA compliance in there, that would involve 60 feet of ramping to get to that elevation. And 60 feet of ramping, that's minimally, that's the 5% grade, would block off access to probably five residences there. So it's, it's, you know, there's, there's a physical challenge to these locations that just does not work. Um, without even addressing the congestion that you would invoke in that, in that area. Um, very narrow street, limited parking. In fact, the, the on-street parking is, has all been dedicated or, or accounted for in, in the parking requirements within the development. Okay. They included off-street, off-site parking.
Just, just to clarify.
Yeah.
The, the motion, uh, in front of us this evening in five C is to find out exactly the kind of things you're describing. It is a, a request for some more staff time. As I understand it, to really kind of flesh out these, these two possibilities. Are you objecting to the review? I, I'm not sure.
Yes, yes, I am. And, and the reason, the reason I am is that the view, the, the perspective has been narrowed down considerably. Um, when, when this cloud was created over the neighborhood to look at options, um, that cloud over the neighborhood was promised to explicitly exclude the access through Pioneer Alley and John Street and look at other options possibly in the future. And what this motion today before you is doing is specifically focusing on those and eliminating the broader look. So there's sort of a conflict with what this motion is doing and what the intent was behind the transportation system plan that put this cloud over the entire area to evaluate the, the crossing of that area. So it excludes revisiting the existing two crossings. It ignores the fact that we already have two crossings in, within six blocks. Um, and, and, um, you know, it also doesn't give you, this is a very complex process. The city spent a lot of money on it. We spent a lot of legal fees. The city spent a lot of legal time on this and, and has voted three times to, you know, not, not go through here. And, and, you know, among the reasons we're, we're not just protect the, the cemetery, but the, the design guidelines, the physical constraints in the land just do not lend themselves to a safe access. It's, you always end up coming to the fact that you're going to need more than three feet. You're going to need more than five feet. You're going to need 10 to 15, 16, 20 feet and fenced off. And you just cannot find that land either in the cemetery or at the development called Pioneer Alley. So I hope that we can put this thing to rest. I think that it will be informative to council to look at all the other options. But I think the record has been really clear and that you just will not find specifications and guidelines that are going to create a safe access through therefore either the community or the cemetery.
Okay. So you didn't see the, the, this proposal that narrowing it, you saw, or you saw it narrowing it rather than leaving in place the other options and then just getting a little more information on these two, which are obviously more complicated.
This, the, the, I mean, the whole projects is a very expensive and balled project. It has huge legal implications. It has huge costs for design. It has huge costs for purchase of property.
Okay.
All of that. And, and I think it's, it's been set on course to focus in on something that has, has clearly been turned down by council in the past.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Kathy for being here together on this same topic for the fourth time, I think it is now. Um, I, I really appreciate your email, uh, regarding lack of context. When we are going to have something like this on the agenda, knowing that you and, and that development is a significantly interested party because it, it affects your property and the fact that you shouldn't have to look at every city council agenda item on every meeting to see if something's coming up. And I'll be asking staff it, uh, during that period as to why we're not letting you know when these things come up.
Thank you.
Alrighty, any other que, yes, Counselor Nordike.
Hi, I would just encourage, uh, thank you so much for your testimony today. It is sincerely appreciated. I always appreciate hearing from you. I remember, uh, seeing you at the stakeholders meeting specifically about this topic earlier this year, far before COVID began. I would encourage you to attend the Neighborhood Association meetings. The cemetery path has been a subject of conversation since roughly January of this year at the Scan Neighborhood Association, the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, and the Swan Neighborhood Association. We have had presentations from Friends of Pioneer at, at least one of those. And we've also had a presentation from city staff at, at least one of those. So I encourage you to avail yourself of the public meeting opportunities to share your perspective. I would also encourage you to take a look at the staff report, which has a detailed discussion of context dating back to 1985 in terms of city council input on this matter. And again, I'm encourage you to just participate and continue to stay engaged in this process. So, uh, thank you so much. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, can I add something in there, please?
This is Congress. Yeah, Jackie.
Thank you, um, Ms. Dewanna. Um, the next upcoming meeting, at least for the Sunny Slope, is on Thursday, August 20th. Um, we've been meeting, um, via Zoom for the past few months. So, um, we, we could definitely try and get you connected to the Neighborhood Association emails if that's what you need to be updated on upcoming meetings.
Uh, thank you. I did not get notice of, of Neighborhood Association meetings. That's, that's correct.
And you can sign up for that. All of their meetings are posted online on the city's website as well as the information from Irma Dowd, our Neighborhood Association Staff Liaison, as well as the Neighborhood Chair. So I would encourage you, all of their schedules are posted online. The agendas and meetings are all online. So definitely encourage you to take a look and see when all the upcoming meetings are.
Thank you.
Is there a way where we could make it, um, easier for people to find the link um, to the Neighborhood Association so that they could, um, if people have questions about it, they could, uh, find it easier?
Yeah.
Certainly work on that. Yes, yes, Kathy. Always a work in progress, but we'll always try to make improvement.
Hey. Okay. Anyone else? Alrighty, we'll move on then to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm of approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item 3.2C pulled by Counselor Hoy and item 3.3B pulled by Counselor Anderson.
Second.
Second by Nanki. Any discussion?
So that leaves item 3.1A, the July 27th, 2020 draft city council minutes. Item 3.2A, adoption of a resolution 2020 dash 38 declaring a public need to acquire easements for storm drainage improvements between Medrona Avenue South and Camilla, Camilla Drive South. Item 3.2B dedication of public right of way on Springwood Avenue Southeast. Item 3.3A, intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services for vehicle rental, fuel purchases, and motor pool shop services. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. All right. If the recorder would please call her all.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure. There may be someone signed up under item eight for other public comment. I don't know if you.
Yeah, that comes at the end. It's not on the agenda.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Atchison. Um, and we'll move on then to public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the planning administrator's decision approving a class three site plan review case number SPR 20-19 for property located at 725 Market Street Northeast. The applicable criteria is SRC Chapter 200.005 F3. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. The appellant is limited to 10 minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes and the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes.
Very good. Counselor Kizer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the record, Grant Neighborhood Association is the appellant in this land use decision. And my husband Eric Bradfield is a co-chair of the Grant Neighborhood Association. Because the decision before council tonight is quasi judicial in nature and because of my relationship with Mr. Bradfield, I'm recusing myself from this deliberation and decision.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Hey, let's go ahead. Uh, Ms. Cole?
Good evening. Hope I can get everything to work just right tonight. Okay. Are you able to see the presentation?
No. Why don't we take a, about, there it comes.
There we go. Okay.
Excellent.
Great. Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, Planted Two with Community Development Department. Request that the presentation, staff report, attachments, and case file be entered into the record. The proposal is a class three site plan review application for re-striping an off-street parking area and constructing an on-street bus and ADA parking area on Cottage Street Northeast at Grant Community School. Alternative street standards are requested to relocate a planter strip and construct a curb line sidewalk to accommodate students in the medically developmental learning center the applicant is relocating to Grant. The property is located on Market Street between Cottage Street and Winter Street. Markets and Minor Arterial and Cottage and Winter are local streets.
Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to recuse myself as well. I have family that has property on Market Street, so I too will recuse myself. And I'm so sorry. I do apologize for interrupting, but I'll recuse from participating in the discussion. Please carry on.
Thank you. This aerial is from 2016, so it shows the existing developments in the area. The school surrounded by single-family dwellings on the east, south, and west. A park on the north and a few non-conforming businesses on single-family zoned properties to the east. The subject property is zone PE, Public and Private Educational Services, shown here in blue. Adjacent zoning designations are RS, Single Family Residential in yellow, and PA for Public Amusement in green. This aerial from 2016, a little closer view, shows the school and the surrounding streets and development. On-street parking exists on both sides of Cottage, Gaines, Hood, and Winter Streets. This closer view from 2016 shows the existing on-street parking bay on Cottage Street Northeast. The exist bus parking bay on Market Street Northeast and the existing parking area on the Winter Street side. The proposal includes a reconfigured street improvement curb and sidewalk on the Cottage Street side and reconfigured parking spaces on the Winter Street side. On the enlarged plan, the blue line indicates the existing curb. The red line is the proposed curb. The orange line indicates the relocated and widened sidewalk. Purple text shows the new ADA parking spaces on the right side. And the green hexagons are the proposed tree replantings from the applicant. On the Winter Street side, the applicant's going to be re-striping existing parking spaces near the building. The paved area also includes bike racks, a solid waste service area, striped ball courts. The main playground is located here near the street. The existing driveway into the off-street parking area is about 18 feet wide and non-conforming with respect to current standards of 22 feet for a two-way driveway. This view is toward the existing parking bay on Cottage Street Northeast, showing one of the trees that would be affected. And this is going the other direction toward the north. So this is the area that would be affected by the proposed reconfiguration of the street and sidewalk, showing some of the other trees that would be affected. This is the existing bus parking area on Market Street, taken from Cottage Street. And from the other side, from Winter Street, looking again toward the existing bus parking area. This is one view of the parking area taken from Winter Street Northeast. And in the distance on the left side is the existing driveway. And this is another view of that parking area that's fenced, showing part of the playground. As you know, the properties within the Grant Neighborhood Association boundary, Grant and several citizens provided comments prior to the decision and again after it was issued prior to this hearing. Grant filed an appeal, staff notified council, and council elected to call the decision up rather than have the appeal heard by the hearings officer. The planning administrator found that the proposal met the criteria for approval shown here. The request for alternative street standards was approved after Public Works found that the applicant demonstrated that there are conditions that make construction that conforms to the standards impossible or undesirable. In their statement, the applicant claimed that the standard configuration with the property line sidewalks undesirable because of the need to accommodate buses that will be conducting drop-offs and pickups for students, some of whom will be using wheelchairs and/or walkers. The planning administrator recommended conditions that would require replanting of all the street trees that would be removed for the bus pullout summarized here. Those trees would be replanted either in the street right of way or on the private property. And staff recommends that council affirm the decision. That concludes my presentation. Of course, I'll be available for, for questions.
Righty. Well then begin with, uh, Mark Shipman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, I, I'm Mark Shipman. I'm Land Use Attorney with Sawfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, Suite 200, Salem, Oregon 97301. Uh, here this evening on behalf of the applicant, the Salem Kaiser School District. Also virtually here with me this evening is Brian Hillsabek. Brian is the Special Education Administrator for the school district and Joel Smallwood, the Director of Maintenance and Constructive Service, Construction Services for the school district. I've got some brief remarks and then, uh, Brian can testify, um, with respect to the specific student population uh, and why the program is at Grant and why the special ed classrooms are designed on the west end of the, uh, the school facility. Uh, the question before you this evening is, uh, whether you should affirm the recommendation of the planning administrator and I would urge that you do so. Uh, this is a class three site plan review to allow the renovation of Grant Community School as a part of the 2019 school bond, uh, work. The applicant currently meets or can meet with appropriate conditions of approval, the mandatory approval criteria for this request. Both the planning department and the public works staff have found that the applicant satisfies these approval criteria for this application. Pamela did a great job with respect to summarizing our request in the staff report and tonight in our presentation. Nothing in the Grant Neighborhood Association. Nothing in the Grant Neighborhood Association appeal, or in the emails or letters submitted in opposition to this request warrants a reversal or denial of the school district's application. As noted in the staff report, the school bus turnout and temporary loading area in Cottage Street is for medically fragile students that attend Grant Community School. The district has agreed to install signage on Cottage Street that would restrict the on-street parking and the bus loading area during proposed pickup and drop-off times for students only, but allow it for any vehicle parking during all other hours. I realize that staff didn't include this and didn't recommend such a condition in their conditions of approval regarding such signage in the staff report, but the school district is supportive of such a condition and would recommend it. As noted before, the district's site plan review request meets all the approval criteria, and on behalf of the Salem Kaiser School District, I respect for the request that you move to approve staff recommendation as submitted. Thank you for your consideration, and at this time, I'd like to...
Mark, if you don't mind, I'd like to let people ask you questions at this point, if anyone has any. You mind? Anyone have any questions? Mark, why... I'm just curious. I... It appeared that the discussion with the neighborhood was sort of cut off, and I... Why... Why did the district decide not to give an additional... Give an extension to the 120 days and see if this could be worked out? This is a... I think as we see from... And you'll hear it later, I'm sure, looking at the written testimony. This is a neighborhood that is aggressively supportive of its neighborhood school. I mean, they are the real deal. Why did this not get a little more time and perhaps some more work?
That's a great question, Mayor. I think in part, it's based on the district's timing for... With respect to approval of an alternative method and proposal. I think the district's been very transparent with the Neighborhood Association regarding its timing. We specifically identified that, similar to the city going through various committees and various commissions, the school district has to go through the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee with respect to an alternative plan. They also have to take it to the school board, but before they even get there, they have to do an analysis with respect from their architects and engineers whether such an alternative proposal, for example, on Winter Street, which is where the Neighborhood Association has been pushing, is even feasible, is even possible. There's... It's more complicated than what the Neighborhood Association is laying it out to be.
Was that analysis done, Mark?
Mayor, I believe that the district is partway through that analysis. I know that... I believe that Joel Smallwood might be able to address that better.
Okay.
I've not been involved in that process. That's been something that has been more of a... More of an administrative level with respect to the school district and with respect to a small group from the Grant Neighborhood Association.
Would it make sense, since it is, if you're correct, and we'll hear from Joel, but if you are correct, they're going through an analysis of Winter Street that may be extending that 120 days? I'm just curious why that wouldn't make sense to try to get this resolved short of an up or down vote, a win-lose for somebody here?
Sure. I... It's a good point, and it's one that the district has not wanted to... Wanted to move forward on at this point. Hopefully Joel can shed a little more light on that.
I hope so. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you again, Mark. The mayor started along a line of questioning that I was interested in too, and I would point out that, you know, South Salem is in my ward, South Salem High School, and we had some concerns there, the neighborhood did, the SCAN Neighborhood Group, about what was going on with the construction and stuff, and so that... On behalf of the neighborhood group, I called that decision up, and the neighborhood group and the school district worked together very well and were able to come up with a compromise and a solution that satisfied everybody, and the folks in the neighborhood group asked me, you know, they withdrew their requests because agreement had been made. Here's my concern. I appreciate everything that the school district has done, and I understand their... And applaud their willingness to look at alternative methods, and I know there was a meeting where superintendent and some of the school board failed went to the school with the neighborhood group and looked around, and the school district has said, "Well, we're going to continue to look at alternatives internally." But what is their incentive, the school district's incentive, to look at alternatives if we give them a blanket okay, an okay to go ahead with the plan they've proposed? I mean, why would you then continue to look at alternatives and come up with something different than what we've already allowed you to do?
That's a great question, Counselor Anderson. You know, the same team that worked with respect to the Neighborhood Association there around South Salem High School is the same team that's working on the grant with respect to Grant Community School. So Joel Smallwood was one of the leaders in those discussions, and he's also deeply involved in this one. And, you know, the reality is, is that... This request that... From the Grant Neighborhood Association is a lot different than what the neighbors of South Salem High School were concerned with. And, you know, it would involve a significant wholesale change with respect to not only the site plan, but I think Joel will speak to the fact that it also would remove usable ball fields that the city of Salem uses, and would also remove playground equipment for the elementary school. It's not a clean, easy solution. There's also some problems with respect to moving those kids, you know, to the desired... The designated classrooms that have been set out on plans on the west side of the school, bringing them in on the east side and moving them all the way through the school building to the west side. I mean, there's a very specific intended purpose for where they were going with respect to the bus, the proposed bus turnout on the west side there of Cottage Street. So it's not a... It's not a simple, straight line in this case. And so I guess with respect to where's the incentive for the school district, I think the school district's been... Has been straight up with the Neighborhood Association in the meetings with respect to their pledges to not move forward with respect to the construction until they have fully vetted... The school district has fully vetted this out to the end. They may come to the conclusion that it can't do it for a number of reasons. They may come to the conclusion that they can do it, and they're going to shift gears and go that direction. That would involve an entirely new application. And so the reality is, is that we're kind of locked into this process now, and the district just didn't feel it made sense at this point to extend the 120 days. I think they'd rather have a decision, whether it's up or down.
Okay. Mr. Smallwood, why don't we... You seem to be the man that Mark is passing off on here, so let's hear from you.
Okay. I'll speak for just a moment. Thank you, Mayor Bennett and counselors. I am Joel Smallwood. As Mark said, I'm the Director for Maintenance and Construction Services for the school district. You know, Mark did a great job of answering some of those questions, and is very accurate. We would like to keep this process moving. We have made a commitment to the Neighborhood Association. Our superintendent made that commitment very publicly to a small group from the Neighborhood Association that we would fully vet and look at a Winter Street option, and we are in process for that. I can talk more about that a little later. I don't want to tie a huge amount of time. We really want Brian Hillsaback to have a few moments in here with you. But our superintendent committed to that. Our Chief Operations Officer, myself, and others have committed to that, and we are in that process. As Mark mentioned, there's a lot of people involved, a lot of groups involved. COVID-19 has not helped our process, that's for sure. But, you know, when we look at this, we look at it from a transportation standpoint for what... Where can we get buses? How can we get buses there? What's a safe place to put a bus? In this particular case, it really comes down to what's the best outcome for the students that this bus drop-off area is serving. It is a very unique cohort of students that we have here, and Brian will talk about that, but it's a unique group who have some incredible needs, and we feel strongly that the Cottage Street drop-off best serves that group of students.
Yeah.
Why we're heading here. Reason for not looking, not being too interested in an extension is we would like to have something ready to go for when we're done with this research on the other side of the property. If that proves to be the decision of the district to move forward with, we can do that. But if it doesn't, if for whatever reason that's determined to be not feasible or not possible, we will be ready to get our permits and go to work here. But I can assure you, and obviously I'm doing this publicly, I would do this in any public forum, the district has no intention of pulling our final building permits after this decision is made and starting this work until we have fulfilled our commitment to the Neighborhood Association, and that involves bringing it to what we call CBOC, our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. They will hear about this, and they will weigh in, depending on where they go with it. It could go further than that to our board, but that's going to be, you know, it's just kind of a next step. There's multiple steps. But I can assure you, we have zero intention of removing any trees or doing any work on this portion of the project, just because we have your affirmation of the staff report.
I guess my question, Mr. Smallwood, then, is why not ratify those good intentions with an extension? I'm having trouble understanding if you have 30 days left in a process or 45 days, whatever your timeline is, it's your project, but why not seek that extension to give an opportunity for the neighborhood to exhaust its opportunity and for... Sort of a playing out the full promise that you'll consider that Winter Street or whatever other alternatives you have in mind. That's the part that maybe just eludes me a little bit on this.
Yeah.
I get the public promise part, but I don't understand why not just ratify it? Why not just give them something here?
Yeah. Yeah. We feel strongly that we need to complete this process that we started in a timely manner. Mark alluded to the fact that the work we did with the SCAN Neighborhood Association on South was much different than this. This is a much more complex project. This is not an adjustment to what we want to do or what we've proposed to do. This is not something that can be... A couple of conditions can be placed and come to an agreement with the Neighborhood Association. What the Neighborhood Association is asking for is a complete wipe of the slate clean from the current plan and starting over. So we see it as a different process. It's completely a different setup for the entire program, what they've suggested.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Smallwood, I just want to tell you personally that the neighbors were very pleased with your cooperation with them and the work you did. So congratulations to you and the school district on that particular project. Nothing but praise from how the school district handled that matter. Are you... Would it be your intent to finish this before the next... Before the schools open again?
Well, no. We anticipate, of course, right now, we anticipate that we'll be bringing students back into our schools in November. Obviously, that's subject to change. We'll know more as we get closer to that. But no, we do not see that this work would happen before that. We wouldn't even be through our process on the Winter Street.
Okay. That was my concern, because if... Back to the extension of 180 days, if you wanted to do the project right now, well, school's not going to be opening till November or even later. But even if you started day after tomorrow with your project, you wouldn't have it done this calendar year, it sounds like.
We probably would if we started the day after tomorrow, but...
Okay.
To be clear, we won't be starting the day after.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So like I said, I would like to allow Brian to talk to you really about the program and why Grant Elementary, why a bus drop-off on Cottage Street.
Counselor Hoy, this is followed by Sam Skiller, and Mr. Hillsaback, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Mayor Bennett, members of the council, is my time limited to three minutes, or do I have other time? I just want to make sure.
You have three minutes.
Okay. All right. So my name is Brian Hillsaback. My name is Brian Hillsaback. I'm a special ed administrator with Salem Kaiser Public Schools.
Sorry, if I could interrupt. Are you speaking on behalf as the applicant? So is this a part of this? Okay. So there's still... They have approximately four-plus minutes total left to speak, so just wanted to make that clear.
I'll just read slower. So my workplace address is 2575 Commercial Street Southeast, Salem, Oregon, 97309. So we have... We currently have four Medical Developmental Learning Center classrooms in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Ones I will speak to this evening are located at Grant, will be located at Grant Community Elementary Schools. These classrooms have been in existence for approximately 12 years. The classrooms were conceptualized and developed in collaboration with parents of children who've experienced disabilities throughout Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Majority of our students who access these classrooms have significant medically-related disabilities that require very specialized and coordinated care, as well as other learning-related disabilities and/or physical disabilities. Approximately three years ago, the district completed a district-wide audit of our special ed services and programs throughout the school district. Out of that audit came some specific recommendations. One of the outcomes of the audit was to address the amount of time students were spending riding the bus to school programs. Sometimes a student could be on a bus over an hour, and that's one way. Centralizing the two Medical Developmental Learning Center classrooms to a school in a central part of town would help. Also recognizing the medical needs of these children, having access to emergency response and location near the hospital influenced our decision. Another outcome of the audit was to consider pairing like elementary specialized classrooms programs into the same school, so students would not have to transition to a new school, new teacher, new support providers after second grade. In this case, the Medical Developmental Learning Center classrooms would be a K2 and a 35 in the same school. Some other advantage... No, I'll go down here. The other factors in choosing Grant was space availability. During the recent Salem Kaiser Public School Boundary Grant changes, Grant was expected to have a 58% occupancy rating, meaning less kids over time would be projected to attend Grant. And so naturally, there was availability of classroom spaces and other spaces to construct facilities to support these students. Spaces such as two, what we call ADA-plus bathrooms, individual restrooms, a separate changing room, a small kitchen with a washer and dryer setup, additional equipment storage, all located right across the hall from the classrooms. As well, there's an entrance to the building located on Cottage Street, the side street of Grant, once modified, where students could safely arrive and depart and quickly enter and exit the building during hot, wet, cold weather. The entrance would also allow quick access and departure for 911 should they be called to support a student. And I'll tell you, this happens often throughout the school year. This entrance would allow for medical technicians to enter and exit the building without disrupting the whole school and student body and to immediately access the student and support staff. At this time, they would have to enter through the front entrance. I'm particularly worried about the drop-off at the front of the school where the current arrival and departure, due to traffic and due to the traffic during school arrival and departure, and the exhaust fumes, as some of our students have respiratory conditions that can impact their health. A number of our students use wheelchairs, and as was mentioned, walkers, and it takes time to conduct the process of safely loading and unloading the child. The last thing I'll offer is that as a public school, you're constantly adapting in modified environments, whether outside or inside a school building, to support students' needs, especially those who experience disabilities. It's simply what we do. These are children who I am sure if they could have it any other way, they would, so it's up to us as a community to ensure the rights and dignity of who they are are being preserved and supported. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any kind of questions that you might have.
Any questions? Right. Thank you very much. Hi, thank you very much. Sam Skiller?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and counselors. I'll be uh appearing on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. And unfortunately, Sam couldn't make it tonight, and I didn't have enough notice to grow his uh goatee, so he'll just have to take me as I come.
Okay, and so tell us who you are, Paul.
Yeah, uh, good evening, everybody. Paul Tigan, uh, live in Ward one, and I'm the land use chair of the Grant Neighborhood Association. Uh, if you give me a moment, I'll share my screen so um I can uh present our PowerPoint that we worked on as a association this weekend. We love Grant School. As neighbors, we are longtime partners, allies and advocates. Our children are Grant Grizzlies. We mentor students and volunteer after school. And this is true, Sam, we are not adversaries, we're not critics, naysayers, or monkey wrenchers. However, we respectfully ask the council to respond to our concerns regarding the proposed Cottage Street Bus Lane. It is not good for Grant. For twenty-five years, we've proven our devotion to Grant School. We raised a hundred thousand dollars and built, volunteer-built two playgrounds. Every April, for Earth Day, we rally neighbors and teachers, families and partners to the annual Grant School Beautification Project. We converted a concrete courtyard into a children's learning garden with raised beds and a greenhouse. We installed pavers and paths, built composting bins and planted most of the shrubs surrounding the school. Over the years, in partnership with the city's arborist, we also planted fifteen trees, including five that would be cut down for this bus lane. The next two slides are a comparison of the greenway now versus the bus lane look. So you can see from this picture, the trees that were planted on the left side of the picture intended to grow and cover a canopy that would resemble most of the streets in, in the Grant neighborhood. Unfortunately, this is a rendering of what that same view will look like after the project is implemented. Twenty-five years, it's been our joy to answer the call at Grant School and the school district to beautify our neighborhood school. In return, we have one small request. Please do not build a bus lane on Cottage Street. That would make a terrible parking and traffic situation a lot worse. We've never been against the medically fragile student program, and I, I don't believe that's been asserted, but we want to make sure that folks know that. We welcome. We'd welcome these students to uh, to Grant, and we certainly recognize their needs. However, the transportation pressures on the program that it'd bring to the district's small school campus is an unreasonable burden for the neighborhood to bear. If the bus lane is approved, the school will use all three of its street frontages, Market, Winter and Cottage for bus and car drop offs. To our knowledge, no other school uses all of its frontage this way. As an older urban neighborhood, Grant has very few garages. Not only do neighbors have to park on the streets, but so do state workers, school employees as well. Multi-family housing developments in most of Grant are no longer to required to provide off-street parking, increasing, increasing parking pressure across the neighborhood as a whole. When you add the high volume of in-district transfers of families who drive to Grant for our prize dual-language immersion program, the parking and traffic conditions are terrible, especially on Cottage Street. Certainly, if school were in session, we could have some video or photos which might be convincing. Grant only has eight parking spots on campus for its nineteen classrooms, which is way under code, but that's grandfathered, and we've accepted it and lived with it for many years. But adding a drastic and permanent change to Cottage Street for thirty minutes of drop offs in the morning and pickups in the afternoon will have a negative effect on neighborhood parking. For months, we've been working with the district on a mutually beneficial alternative. We've already been discussing this this evening. We asked for a sit-down process to work through a number of alternatives. Because of COVID, these meetings were not possible. We unilaterally suggested a number of ideas to the district and to the city staff. At first, those ideas were rebuffed, but with persistence and goodwill, as was mentioned, we were able to meet onsite in May with Superintendent Christie Perry, Mike Wolfe, Mr. Smallwood and three school board members. We'd characterize it as a positive meeting, and the district assured us they would vet alternatives. We believe that there are two highly viable alternatives to the Cottage Street Bus Lane, which is slated to cost between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, remove seven to nine parking spots and radically alter the public right of way. The first option that we discussed is the hundred and ninety-foot Market Street Bus Lane. Grant already has a curb cut into the right of way for transportation purposes. It's on Market Street. It's directly adjacent to the front door of the building and another double door on Market Street. The Market Street Bus Lane has several benefit. It's completely built, it's permitted and requires no additional investment. The buses don't have to compete with or increase traffic as they would on Cottage or Winter Streets. It drops off students at the front door where the ADA accessibility is currently being improved. They might have just finished up today. The Market Street Bus Lane would also require no removal of street trees, and even if it's less ideal from the district's perspective, it's the least disruptive alternative. The second option is the existing Winter Street Parking Lot on Grant's campus. It currently handles car and truck parking as well as garbage truck ingress and egress. It too has several benefits. It's located on school property and requires no to little impact on the public right of way. The buses don't have to compete or increase with traffic as they would on Cottage Street. It drops off the students in a safer, quieter and respectful location, the garden that was previously photo. The pedestrian distance from the drop-off site to the double-door entry is comparable to that on Cottage Street with the path that's covered from the weather somewhat. The cost is not yet calculated, but presumably cheaper than a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars slated for the bus lane. Um, we haven't seen the scope of what the city, what the school district is analyzing. Um, if it includes the removal of the playground and ball fields, that isn't the extent of what we discussed onsite. Even though Grant would lose some of the eight parking spots, the Salem Alliance Church, Salem Alliance Church has a formal agreement in place that would allow Grant staff to park for free one block north of the school in the ninety-car lot at Hood and Cottage Streets. It would require only a minor, minor widening of the existing driveway and no tree removal for a single in-and-out access point. Or the removal of one tree to create a second driveway and a vehicle loop for drop offs. We've been assured by the district that they are working with an architect to calculate the costs and logistics of using the Winter Street lot. They've told us, we'll be meeting perhaps later this month to review alternatives, and we are extremely grateful for this commitment. However, as we've discussed, the hundred and twenty-day period for a city decision is coming fast, August twenty-seventh. We've asked the district to request an extension which would allow more time for the review process that they've indicated will go into September as they seek approval for the Bond Construction Oversight Committee and the School Board. In summary, we are not in favor of this application, and we do not want to see it approved. We also recognize that a denial would create a difficult situation for the school district. If there is a way to condition this, the approval tonight to keep the project on track, but move the bus drop off to Market or Winter Street, that would be optimal. However, if you're going to have an up or down vote on this tonight, we request that you deny the permit. We are hoping, as from the beginning, that we can work things out based on goodwill, good faith and creative thinking. Thank you for the opportunity to present our case. We look forward to working with the city and the school district on a mutually beneficial solution.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Are there any questions for Paul? Anyone? Counselor Lewis, were your, was your hand up? No, okay. Okay. Alrighty, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you again.
Is Aaron interpreting? Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna ask, will we have an opportunity to go back to the school district for questions?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure you do. Um. Is Aaron gonna be testifying? There he is.
Yeah, yeah, let's see. Okay, video. All right, are we all right? Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to testify really quick. Uh, Aaron interpreting Ward one. I just want to say I'm not um, uh, speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Association here. I'm a father. I got three Grant Grizzlies, one are gonna be in first grade, one in third grade and one in fifth grade. Um, and we as a family are just excited about the DLC program coming. My wife has been a specialized teacher for over twenty, or nearly twenty years. And so we know uh that these kids can really enrich our lives and we're happy to have them. So um, but I just wanted to point out a couple, a couple of things I heard. Uh, one was that, uh, I think Mark mentioned that nothing in the neighbor comments addressed any um, directly any applicable code issues. And uh, that just stuck out to me because on the contrary, the one that sticks out uh in the staff report uh states that um, the applicant is going to be allowed to um, or, or staff recommends to allow this improvement that does not conform to standards because um, it is impossible to, to do so. And I didn't see anything in the report or in the proposal that explained why it was impossible to meet standards. The other thing that I would like to point out was that uh there were all kinds of mistakes in the staff report and proposal for things like trees. There were trees, there were trees that are over ten inches, ten inches in diameter at um breast height. And it said that there weren't. Um, uh, all that to say, I, I think we need to pause on this. Um, we need to look at alternatives. I have not heard any um compromise to say, could we just expand, say, the existing drop off on Cottage Street? Um, and, and not remove all the trees, for example. I've never heard of putting street trees on private property. That's not a street tree to me. Um, so that really concerns me as a neighbor. It's not um congruous with our neighborhood. Um, and the other thing is, I, it really does concern me that these kids are, the proposal takes them to a back door and they go in a back door. I, that really bothers me. Um, I know that's not related to city code, but I just wanted to point it out. I got excited about these kids coming to the school, and I, I think there could be an option where they pull out, the buses pull out and drop them off on Cottage, but they come to the main entrance undercover, away from fumes, out of the rain and wait for Principal Morris to open the doors at eight forty-five. So I, I would ask council to please um, deny the proposal as is and ask the applicant to either extend um, for purposes of working together on solutions. And again, I, I'll just say again, I'm not against the project per se. I just have concerns.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? All right, now, questions for staff, school district?
Excuse me, Mayor. I believe the applicant has uh five minutes rebuttal time.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Mayor.
Is it Mark that would do it?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I think that, that there was a question raised with respect to Market Street, and I think that um uh, it's, it's been the district's position that, that Market Street doesn't work uh at that location with respect to uh the entrance there on, directly, directly on Market Street. Uh, the, the staff of the school district specifically chose Cottage Street. Um, I know that um, that was, that was intentionally done with respect to uh the access to where the proposed uh rooms for the, the, these students are, are gonna be on the west side of the building. Um, the other comment I would make is that with respect to the, I've, I've not seen uh costs of, of what the alternate um, potential improvement would be on, on Winter Street. Uh, but I know it's more than just dealing with uh right-of-way costs and uh improvements at that location. Um, there's also uh, you know, the way that the, the school and, and design for uh the renovation was done, taking into account these, these special rooms for the student population. Um, I'm not sure how that, how that flows, and that's something that the architects are gonna look at. Again, I've not been involved with that, but I think that for, for council to realize that it's more than just the numbers I believe the neighborhoods associations come up with. Appreciate the fact that they, they've come up and trying to show that, hey, you know, the, the numbers aren't that different between what they're looking at at Cottage Street, what they're, what the district could be looking at at Winter Street, but I think, I know that Winter Street is gonna be a lot more money. Um, you know, the, the district, I think, has been transparent with respect to uh working with the Neighborhood Association. Um, it's just the district's desire to, to be able to get a decision so that they can have something they can, they, they know they have in order to be able to continue to move forward. That's not stopping them from moving forward, but frankly, it's just, it's just something that, that uh, I know that, that Joel and their team uh would really like to get. So our, our feeling is, is that um staff, you know, thoroughly reviewed this. Um, and both uh planning staff and public work staff found that we satisfied all the approval criteria. Um, and again, I would just respectfully request the council uh move staff recommendation and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela, anything, or no, Pamela, um, I want to check in with the recorder. Is there anything else we need to have that's part of the public hearing side of questions?
I think we've met all of the people of, you know, the fulfilling for the person speaking.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I allow, Dan, can I allow people to ask questions again?
Mayor?
No. Do questions to staff, and then if the staff has any new evidence that's presented, the applicant will have an opportunity to rebuttal staff's comments.
So it's staff-only questions? Is that what you're telling me?
You can.
Now, Counselor Hoy would like to ask the school district questions. Can you do that?
Yes, you can go ahead and do that now as part of the rebuttal.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, I'm not sure if this is best for Mr. Shipman or Mr. Smallwood, uh, but I'm, I'm troubled by what I've heard tonight, what I read in the, in the material. It's, it seems like there's an opportunity here for the, for the school district to pull a win out of here. And you're kind of doing everything you can to not, to not make that happen. I mean, Grant School is the most uh, I would say, integrated school within its neighborhood, probably in this whole city. It's a remarkable school. Uh, Counselor Nordike and I went there a few months ago before the lockdown and volunteered in a reading program, and you know, the parking is a nightmare. Um, the, but the school district was, uh, it was, or the school was amazing. And I, I'm just very, something isn't ringing true here with your statements about, well, we want to work with the Neighborhood Association. We're gonna keep exploring those options, but yet we want to approve this. When all you, you could very easily ask for an extension and, and then your statements could, would still be true, and you could still pursue your path. So that doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the, you know, we go to a lot of neighborhood meetings uh around the city, counselors do. Guess what the number one complaint I get is? The number one amount of time we spend on is school district management of traffic and parking around their schools. I mean, there isn't probably no more heated topic that I deal with out here in northeast Salem than that. The, the traffic management around McKay, around Swigle, uh, it's, it's really bad. You have a, a major impact on the neighbors. And that's what is happening here is you're, you're about to have a, a major impact on these neighbors who, who are your allies and your friends, and they want to work with you here towards a mutually uh beneficial and agreeable uh solution. But I'm not hearing that you're coming to that, to that table, and so help me out there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Counselor Hoy. It's a, a great point, and I can certainly understand um, you know, what you've heard tonight and what you've seen on paper, how you would draw that conclusion. Um, but I can, can assure you, and it is in the staff report, it's back um, or to the back of that six or eighty pages uh, a document, is um a pretty good rundown of communication we've had with the Neighborhood Association and attempts we've made uh to talk, to work through uh the details um, and to uh try to come to a resolution. Um, you know, I want to talk about a couple of the options here that have came. Market Street drop off out front uh has been brought up more than once tonight. Yes, it does exist. Uh, as, as Brian mentioned, these kiddos take a while to get off and on the bus, five to ten minutes at times. Uh, Market Street uh currently already has backup issues. We are uh fairly certain that if we start parking these buses on Market Street, we will have parent drop off, westbound Market Street, a parent drop off, uh probably backing up for a block and a half to three blocks to the east. The westbound traffic, cuz they aren't gonna be able to get in there to drop off. Uh, what it's going to do is force them around the corner on the Cottage Street, dropping off in the parking, in the middle of the. What it's going to do is force them around the corner on the Cottage Street, dropping off in the parking, in the middle of the lane. Because there's nowhere to pull, nowhere to pull off other than that. So Market Street really, really doesn't work at all for us. When we start looking at the Winter Street option, and I'm not going into great detail, but because we're still vetting that with our transportation department and others about feasibility. But I can assure you, it's quite a bit larger of a project than what's been displayed tonight. It is a lot over there and will eat up quite a bit of green space and other areas. It won't. It will not take out the playground that the Grant Neighborhood Association so graciously assisted with providing. It will cause kids to be crossing a bus lane to get to it, a little different than they are now. The proposal that's came your way or, you know, the brief conversation around using just that back parking lot, basically as it exists now. Simply doesn't work with bus turning radiuses with the safety of our students and getting kids in and out of there. It also takes them in the absolute back door of the building. If we just use the little parking lot that's there, which causes us all kinds of concerns. Much along lines of what Mr. Turpinning was mentioning in his testimony two years earlier. So those are, you know, a couple of the, a couple of things. As far as the other options out there. We have, to your point, we feel like we have had a lot of conversations with the neighborhood association to try to come to something. That's agreeable. We have actually adjusted the Cottage Street plan from what it originally was. It originally was a little bit wider of a street. That curb was set back even further off of the center street, the center line of the street. Through comments, through concerns about what that would do, the perception of a wider street, meaning people would drive faster. And speed through that neighborhood. We actually moved our curb forward. I believe it was five feet from our first proposal. So we, we have made some adjustments. Granted, they haven't been completely away from that street. And to be direct, that appears to be the only solution. That would. Meet. Neighborhood Association's request is to completely go away from Cottage Street.
Thank you.
I want one more question.
Yeah.
Thank you. The observation that this would now have. Traffic or drop off on, on all three sides of the street facing. Is that typical for a school in Salem or is that unusual or, and do you find that? Does that concern you at all that suddenly you're going to be dropping off on all three sides of that school?
I don't, I wouldn't say it's necessarily typical, that's for sure. I don't know that it, that it exists or doesn't exist anywhere else in our district. As was stated earlier, I couldn't, couldn't say on that one way or the other. What I can say is. Grant is a unique school with several unique programs in it already. And this is one of those unique programs. So the drop off there, other than what happens on Market Street. The other, what's currently happening on Winter Street is to serve another program in that building. That makes a lot of sense to have them there. It's a developmental kindergarten program. The kiddos in that program are not as developed, as challenged as the kids we're talking about in this medically fragile DLC. But certainly a very young group of kids that we get directly into the school as quickly as we can. Rather than dropping them on one of the main arteries through town being Market Street. My understanding of Market Street is that we actually have one bus, one large bus that uses Market Street regularly. It's mostly used for parent drop off on Market Street.
Thank you.
I will tell you that as a city councillor for the ward that includes Grant School, several years ago, Mr. Hopman and I, our traffic. Engineer and I believe Mr. Bechtel met with school district neighbors and it took us a substantial amount of time to arrive at the current situation on Cottage Street. It was a great deal of work and it was very difficult to just get to what we've got there. I can see why. They'd be wildly concerned about seeing the whole thing start over again. Where are you going to replace these parking spaces that were mentioned as lost? Mr. Smallwood, how will that be handled? Do we have parking spaces, on-street parking spaces disappearing? Did I understand that correctly for this, for this project?
Yes, it does. Remove some on-street parking during certain times of the day. As Mark mentioned, it's not, it's not something that's in our plan or has been. Brought to us as a condition of approval from city staff, but we would certainly welcome it as a condition. We would rather have it that way. And that would be that we would sign that area so that it was exclusively for bus use only during certain times of the day. So that it could be used for parking for the community the rest of the time, you know, rest of the day, weekends, holidays, things like that. So it will remove some parking spaces on the street for a short period.
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask Ms. Cole about it, but do you know why that wasn't made a condition in this case? I'm just surprised that in a, in a substandard parking situation, becoming sub-substandard. Why you wouldn't have some sort of condition on that. But I'll ask her. I just wondered if you happen to know why. Did you guys say we don't want that or?
No, I don't know why that condition.
Well, we'll let her answer. Okay, do we want to move on then to staff if you have any questions? Okay. Ms. Cole, why parking not a condition? This is getting worse for parking.
It's on-street parking. So our minimum requirements regard off-street parking. So there weren't conditions. They weren't doing anything. To make additions to the building that would require them to add parking spaces off-street. So with the on-street parking, I didn't recommend that condition for signage, but. I did mention that they could do that because I was concerned that if the signage is there. And if there are any violations, that they could have a lot of difficulty because the buses would need to be there and there would be cars parked there. That was my only concern with that. Otherwise, I would support it.
It's a very good concern. That was the problem we were dealing with years ago was people, there was signage. People were using it for parking and it was set aside for buses and it was a mess, absolute mess.
If they felt that they would like to offer that as a condition or if they would want to propose signing that that way, I would be fine with that. But that was, that was my concern, just the potential for violations.
Well, we'll have to add to the parking and. Tollway costs, I think, for the city just to deal with this in order to open those up. So interesting proposition, huh? Okay, anything for the staff? Yeah, Tom?
Thank you. A couple of questions, Pam. The existing parking is non-conforming and this is just going to make it worse. And I guess that's kind of following up on what the mayor said. And then, as I understand it, there is no, you know, around South Salem High, there's the RP districts. And if, and a lot of our neighborhoods, if you're not a resident, you can only park for ninety minutes. But my understanding is that that condition is not there on Winter and Cottage Streets?
That's what the Neighborhood Association comments said, that they don't currently have residential permit parking on those streets. But if this does move forward, they may consider requesting that.
Okay. And then, go ahead, go ahead.
As far as the non-conforming parking, in the parking chapter, it's, it's a longstanding, non-conforming situation. And they aren't doing, they're not adding classrooms. They're not adding to the number of classrooms. So we don't have a trigger to require that they bring everything up to current standards.
I understand that.
As far as off-street parking.
Now. Is this anyway connected with the Winter Maple Bike Greenway?
No.
I mean, it's winter, but that's not where the Bike Greenway doesn't go down that, that winter, that part of Winter Street.
I haven't looked at that. I believe it's, it's not on this street.
But you can't, sorry, Angela. Now, my next question is, there's been some dispute about the number of trees. And their height and their width and what kind they are and Ms. Turpinning said that again tonight and there are a couple. Oh, some people, a husband, a wife, it looks like from the same last name came out, gave us testimony on that about. That's not true. So what's, what are the real facts here about the trees and how many of them are there and how high are they?
I believe that there would be five trees that would be removed and they were showing replacing four of them. But we can go back and look at that. The other question was the sizes. So in my staff report, I was looking at whether they were mature trees, which is ten inches or more. I may have missed one. I believe from what I've seen that came in today, that was more specific toward the street tree removal permit, which is separate. But concurrently running with this process, that they conducted measurements and found that there was one that was over ten inches. Eleven, I think, eleven inches. So that's a mature tree. It's not a protected tree. It's a street tree. It's, it's a mature tree. According to our, what we would classify as mature tree in the landscaping chapter, which is even a little different because that's for trees on private property. So I'm comparing some of the trees there. Are smaller. When I was looking at, okay, well, what happens if we try to look at Winter Street? The trees on Winter Street are much larger. So that would be a concern if we have to take out any of the trees on Winter Street because some of those are significantly larger than the ones on Cottage. So, yeah, I may have missed one. I didn't go out and measure it with a caliper, so. But the street tree removal permit is another thing that's coming up for appeal. I believe that's not something that's heard by council. And the comments that we received today from several people were referencing really specific details toward chapter eighty-six. So those were for street tree removal permit questions, but we did forward them to you as well because it's a consideration that is related.
Hey, any further questions? Righty, then I'm going to close, close the public hearing?
Yes.
No, Mr. Mayor, the applicant has a chance to rebut this, staff.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Ms. Shipman. You want to rebut the staff?
No, Mr. Mayor. The only clarification I would make is Pamela had recommended the condition of approval with respect to signage. And I think as both myself and, and Mr. Smallwood had indicated, the district would welcome an additional condition along those lines.
And one, one other comment there is currently the condition or the plan would have us replanting a minimum. The tree size is a minimum of a two-inch diameter. I believe that's typical standard language. We would certainly entertain planting larger trees than that. I don't know how large a tree we can get and successfully transplant. So I don't know that it would be the same size as what's there. But certainly if we can get a head start on developing a canopy in that area, we would, we would do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're done. And, and, you know, the district does appreciate all of your time, the neighborhood association's time. We work closely with all of our neighborhood associations, as you know. We work closely through with some of these with SCAN and others. And we certainly plan to continue the conversation with the Grant Neighborhood Association. So thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then, Ms. Atchison, I can close public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll close public hearing. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation regarding the planning administrative decision for class three site plan review, case number SPR twenty-nine.
Second, second by Louis.
Just to speak to it, I, I have very mixed feelings on this one. I'm very disappointed in the process so far. I would like the school district to. Get a win here, a district that needs a win in our community right now, frankly. And they could do that easily by just asking for an extension. They've chosen to not do that and that's very disappointing to me. I don't know that we have any grounds to deny this, however.
Yeah, I join you in that. I, I absolutely don't understand why they're not asking for an extension. I can't hear a good reason. I listened carefully for one. I thought that would be maybe the saving grace for the district. But for some reason, and this is how it hits me, I mean, I don't mean to be unkind. I think this is very heavy-handed. I think there's still room to talk. This is a very, very. Positive neighborhood group. This isn't one that's trying to muscle them. They're just trying to work with them. I think if they saw that the Winter Street side didn't work, I think that this would be resolved. Much closer in their favor. I'm just having a very hard time understanding why this has not been resolved. I, I talked some time ago with district representatives about this, strongly encouraged. Finding an outcome other than just calling us, just calling on us to just. Go up or down on this thing. I absolutely don't understand why we're in this position right now as the time is available. The issue is a positive issue. The students are being well, everyone's excited that they're coming to the school. I just don't understand it. So the money we're talking about in a bond measure, one of the largest bond measures in history. Is negligible compared to the larger issues at stake. Certainly the goodwill at stake. I think it's really sad to give up the goodwill, but that's, that's what's happening right now. Relative to that institution, so. I'm just having a real hard time with it too, councillor. Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I concur largely with that. I live three houses away from an elementary school. I ran into several directors of City of Salem departments as I was dropping my son off for middle school as well. And it always comes back to parking, parent drop off, no matter where we are. And so, you know, I sympathize with the neighbors because that's how I got involved. I am city council over twenty years ago. And I also sympathize with the school district trying to make accommodations, keep their costs down because there's extracurricular activities. That cause. Traffic onto neighborhood streets which displaces people when they come home from work. If there's a ballgame going on. You know, they have designs in place on how they want to see the interior of that school set up. And, and, you know, parking or drop off locations is a significant element of that as well. What it comes down to though ultimately is the criteria, which.
We lost you, councillor.
Yeah, somehow my finger hit the spacebar and it muted me out. We have to look at their criteria, knowing that there's still some potential avenues and I'd still like to see those somewhat worked out. Accepted. I do have some concerns over what was put out to the public in regards to diameter, breast height of the trees and tree species. Since that's part of the public record as well. And we really need to be cognizant that. That our factual bases. Are accurate as well, so. The criteria is technically been met. I would have to, you know, go for that. Am I happy when we have disagreements? It could potentially still be worked out? No. And hopefully. Both the school district and the neighborhood can continue those conversations and see if we can find something. If not, ultimately good for one side or the other, at least beneficial to both and to where we can cede some ground on either side since. That's where compromise lives.
Okay, councillor Lewis?
Yes, I have a, I guess a request for the maker of the motion. The school district had mentioned. The willingness to include signage as one of the criteria and I would like to, anything that. And I, and I would like to, anything that could help mitigate the situation, I think, is a benefit. And so I wondered if you would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. I, I'm perfectly fine with that. I thought about it when I made the motion. I, I don't understand why they can't just put the signs in anyway, why they would need a condition to put the signs in. If, if that's true that they need a condition to put the signs in, very happy to, to do that. But it, to me, it seemed like something they could do without that. But maybe I just am missing something. I see Mr. Atchison has appeared before us in the lower left square. So maybe he'll enlighten me on that.
The attorney for the block. No, they, you, you don't need to condition it. You can if you want to, but they, they're, they have the ability to do that without a condition.
Thank you, that's what I thought. That's why I didn't include it. But if, if counselors are more comfortable having it in there, I'm happy to have it in there.
No, I would second that.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I, I, I understand the concerns that Ms. Cole put forward as well. You know, on the weekends, it's not a big deal and the evenings is not a big deal. But what if somebody's parked there in the middle of a school day? And then what do we do? It, it's tough no matter which way you go. And I, you know, I understand why staff didn't recommend putting it in. But, uh, that's the downside.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all fun and games till the tow truck shows up.
Yes, sir.
Off to the impoundment yard. And that's one of the outcomes of this kind of stuff.
And it's really expensive, especially for people of, of limited means as well. Because I, I've had to assist my son in that endeavor as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I sure recommend not, not going ahead with this either voluntarily or any other way. This is the kind of stuff that just creates conflict that you just can look forward to. Although you are passing it along to new Counselor Stapleton. Let her worry about it later, because I can tell you, I had to worry about it for a few years. And it's a, it's a very difficult problem. Counselor Anderson?
If it becomes a serious issue for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You can leave it to them.
It will. Counselor Anderson, did you want to?
Yes, I did. I want to echo the mayor's comments and Counselor Hoy's comments. And Mayor, you said you didn't want to be heavy handed. Well, I wish I could be heavy handed. And one of the things I had a conversation with the city attorney, just can we, as the council, move to extend the 180 days, 120 day deadline? And no, we can't. It's up to the applicant. So I can't figure out why the applicant doesn't want to do that. What, they've explained, we want a project, we want to get going. We're going to deal with the neighborhood group afterwards. But the neighborhood group isn't going to buy that, and I'm not sure I buy that. And I agree with Counselor Hoy that the, the school district, for many reasons, none of which have anything to do with this particular reason, this particular issue in front of the council. They could use some good community PR. And they're not getting it this way. They're just increasing the bad PR they have. And, and another way I look at this and say, okay, the school district, now who's the bad guys here? It's not the school district who proposed this, it's the council if we approve it. So that's a very nice way for the school district to shift their responsibility onto us, and I don't like that.
Get ready on SROs, you'll see the same kind of package.
I know, I know. And that's one of the things that I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
I know.
Issues between the school district and the city. This is an easy way for the school district to buy some goodwill, not with just the public, but with the council. Instead, you're forcing us into a position, and the staff says the same thing. What I read between the staff's reports, what they're saying is, well, they meet the criteria. And, and all these other things that have been raised up, the staff is into a box because you do meet the criteria. And I'm a lawyer and I understand what that means. I understand what the criteria means. And so, yes, if I get forced into that box by the school district's refusal to do something that would only be a win-win, I got no other choice. But it doesn't make me very happy, and it will not make me very happy in future district dealings with the school district. So, you know, that's what I said, that's, that's my view, and I'm not going to change it because of this and because of other things like the SROs and other comments made by the, by the school district elected board of directors on various issues. And, you know, it's, it's very disappointing to me. And I'm going to vote for this. And the only thin read I rely on is Mr. Smallwood, who I, past experience, I trust, and Mr. Shipman, who I trust, that yes, the school district is going to look at these things. But I could predict right now the school district will look at these things, and they're not going to do anything. They're going to proceed with the plan that they want.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to say something really briefly.
Counselor Young?
Thank you. So I've been listening in, and I feel like this is going to be like echoing everyone else. This is going to be a hard decision to make. I am not pleased with the process. I think the school district should have worked better and perhaps even harder with the neighborhood association. I agree with Counselor Anderson, as well as several other folks at the school district, could have extended the deadline to make things work better, but unfortunately, they're not willing to do that. I think this, again, presents a disservice to our community. And I think we, as elected officials, still need to consider the impact on our, of our decisions on communities. This includes listening to our community, ensuring that our voice, their voices are heard in decision-making process. I had hoped that the school district would work with the neighborhood association, but, I mean, I don't have much faith that they will. I think this could have ended in a better result. And, you know, in the end, like I, like I'm going to be voting, I cannot vote in favor of this petition. I'm going to be voting to deny as is. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, yes. Dan, did you want to? Dan?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just turning my camera back on.
Oh, okay, I thought you were waving. All right, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Okay, so Counselor Kizer recused herself. Counselor Anderson?
I vote a pyrrhic victory, aye.
Okay, Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Nay.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
And Counselor Nord, Nordike also recused herself. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
No. Okay, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to our next special order of business. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council adopt Resolution Number 2020-37, extending the declaration of emergency until January 12th, 2021, to continue the vehicle camping pilot program.
Second. Second by Lewis. A discussion? Counselor Lewis?
Yes, I'm going to take this opportunity to follow up on what we heard from Mr. Poole at the last meeting and what's going on in the Cascade Gateway Park. I'm, I'm growing more and more concerned about what's happening in Wallace Marine Park. I, I understand the, the decision for the camping area. But the, the parking lot that abuts the Union Street Bridge is now turned into a motorhome camping space. There's five motorhomes that are there overnight, violating the city ordinances. And quite frankly, representing the West Salem neighborhood. If we are going to allow car camping in parks, we should allow car camping in all parks. If we're not going to allow car camping in parks, we shouldn't allow it in any park.
Mr. Powers, did you want to speak to this, this car camping issue at all?
Yes, thank you. It, it's, it's a challenging issue. We are looking at options to frankly mitigate the impact of, of enforcement of the no overnight camping in city parks. That work is going slower than, than anyone would like. I certainly understand and in discussions with, with staff, realize the impacts that the vehicle camping may be having on, on use, uses of Wallace Marine, of Cascades, Gateway Park. And we are not, we are not ignoring the vehicle camping prohibition. We are, again, attempting to enforce with, with some mitigation.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and this technically isn't the one so much regarding the car camping. And, and again, to address Neighborhood Association Chair Poole's comment regarding Cascade Gateways and, and the issues involved there. And, and I voted against this, the, I think, the last time or two that it's been brought forward. But, you know, we're still prohibiting public gatherings in public spaces and restricting public space to active pedestrian use when the governor is actually relaxed significantly those requirements to where we can't have two people talking to each other on a sidewalk for 10 minutes. Or they're technically in violation of our codes. And, and that's why I'm not necessarily going to vote in, in favor of this. Some of the pieces, yes, are still technically active and viable. But that one absolutely makes no sense to me. When meeting groups of 10 or 25 or 50, depending on a space, they're outside, technically, they wouldn't even have to be wearing masks if they were further than six feet apart from each other. But we don't define that. Two people meeting on a sidewalk, is that within six feet or is that eight feet or 10 feet? And if I'm 10 feet from someone, am I technically in violation of city code?
Mr. Atchison?
I would be happy to discuss that with Counselor Nanki. The, says it's prohibited in the same area, area isn't defined. So there is some judgment that the police have to use to enforce that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor Anderson?
I'll just press my spacebar. I couldn't get my, my... I'm interested in another part of the emergency declaration, which prohibit, number two, prohibits public gatherings in public spaces. And I specifically would like the city manager to comment, and he and I have talked about this in the past, about the church, I forget what it was called, but the church that was meeting in the park, the south end of the park, down by the, the, the natural auditorium there. And we're having meetings without public, without distancing and without mask and clearly in violation of the ordinance. And I, I, I just would like the city manager to explain his and the staff's thinking as to what they did and did not do with respect to this church, because I've been getting lots and lots of comments about it.
Mr. Mayor, could I follow up on that? So Mr. Powers could address it at the same time?
Yes.
Mr. Powers, when you're addressing Counselor Anderson's question, if you could also address their use of city electricity? I, that's a, an outstanding question I have from a neighborhood group, wanting to know why we're allowing amplified, sound amplification using city electricity when, uh, when we're not issuing a demo permit.
Okay, Mr. Powers?
Uh, well, there's kind of a lot to unpack there, some of it completely unrelated to the issue before you. I'll start with the, the latter first. Our interpretation of Governor Brown's guidelines, and I believe we're still waiting for confirmation of this from the Oregon Health Authority, is that when there is a host, whether that's a city or a private business, a host on property, we are required to provide a monitor if, if the number of people is more than 25. We are unable to do that in our city parks. We are not staffed to provide a, a monitor. We attempted to see if that could be done by the group or groups that were using city property, whether that's a park or a, a city street for a demonstration. And we were told, no, that it had to be provided by, by the permittee. So for that reason, we revoked a permit in the park. We do not evaluate that decision based upon the content of, of the, the permittee. It was based upon the crowd size. My understanding, and, and perhaps Director Fernandez can help me, my understanding is there aren't groups using city electricity. Having gone by there this past Sunday, I noticed there was an amplifier and it appeared to be, you know, a battery powered amplifier. I did not see any cords that were plugged into any city outlets. Regarding the, so that, that was the reason for the revocation of the permit, because the, the city could not provide the monitor that was required. The question of the camping, I, I do understand that, particularly the, the growing problematic nature of, of, of the camping in, in the two city parks. We continue to believe that the city parks' locations are a better alternative than, say, for example, a city sidewalk. And we do need to, I believe, and, and we'll have a, a report or recommendation for council later, that we do need to take a look at how those two locations could be more sustainable. Because right now, we do not have a, a good alternative. As was shared earlier, Redwood Crossings will add 37 beds. I, I believe the current estimated count for the two locations, setting aside whether anyone is, is suitable for specific sheltering or housing choices, the numbers are, are in the, in the hundreds. So we, we really have a very, very challenging situation on top of the really what's become impossible of trying to accomplish competing in, in multiple public policy goals.
Mr. Powers, are we reviewing some additional locations for overnight car or camper sleeping arrangements?
Yes, we are. And council's action at the previous meeting was very helpful in that regard in, in regards to having funding available to help incent or mitigate the impacts of additional vehicle camping locations. Again, it's gone much slower, as I mentioned earlier, much slower than I think anyone would like. But there are a couple of possibilities that are being explored.
Are, are your intentions then, Mr. Powers, when you get alternative sites, you will be enforcing more aggressively enforcing the ordinances relative to Wallace Marine or Cascade Gateway in terms of this kind of vehicle camping situation?
Yes, that is, that is the intent this evening. However, it is a, a dynamic situation. The number of, of vehicles has increased. It may not become tenable to continue to try to help the individuals find alternative locations to go than, than the city parks.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if the recorder would please call a roll?
All right, Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Nay.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
That was an aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay. Counselor Nordike? Five C.
One moment when I get my paperwork handy.
Okay.
We have an awful lot of paperwork for this meeting, per usual.
This is a, this is a good sized report.
Indeed, indeed it is, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, this is, I think, just some of what people have to say about the path. So, all right, so I have to start off by reading off the world's longest motion. So bear with me while I read. I move that City Council directs staff to submit a report to City Council that provides additional information regarding two potential pedestrian paths linking Candelaria and Fairmont neighborhoods between Hoyt Street and Ruhl Avenue. Number one, a path through Pioneer Cemetery that connects the two neighborhoods. And two, a path connecting the two neighborhoods that includes City View Cemetery. The report will include a summary of the issues, constraints and options for the two potential paths. The report will also provide planning level estimates of the cost of constructing the two paths, not including potential expenses related to acquiring property or easements. During the course of their research, staff will discuss the two options with representatives of City View Cemetery and Pioneer View LLC, which stands for Limited Liability Corporation. Everyone law school knows that now. Summarize the results of these conversations to council in the report. That is my motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Kazer. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I'd love to. Thank you, Mayor. So what we are still talking about, folks, is not about constructing a path, but conducting the research we need to do in order to determine whether that makes sense. Now, we heard testimony from one person today who is a representative of the Limited Liability Corporation that I mentioned. And I want to encourage council to consider the fact that there has been no rushed judgment with regard to a potential path. As I stated earlier, we have been discussing a potential path in several neighborhood association meetings since roughly January of this year, depending on which of the three neighborhood associations you're referring to. We had a motion to study earlier in the spring. We had a staff report published in June. And we have had even more information and discussion at neighborhood meetings since the June staff report was published online for everyone. I would also point out that in terms of context, we do have context as set forth in the seven page background information that was provided as part of the June 22nd meeting. So we do have some background, but the real question is, you know, what would a path look like? What would it cost? The matter of cost is an open question. And precluding staff from looking into how much it costs means that we won't know how much it costs. Also, I would expect that if this motion were to pass, again, this is merely a motion to conduct additional information, because the staff feel that in order to present additional information, I had to come back and request it here publicly. I am sure that if in fact further information comes out, it will be discussed yet again at the Scan, the Swan and the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Associations. I have also, just so folks are, are aware, Friends of Pioneer has also been doing some presentations on this subject. And I've also invited city staff to attend the Swan Neighborhood Association meeting, which is where the Pioneer Path is situated, situated in Swan. You may have seen, I'm not sure if it made it into the materials, but Swan did present information that they are supportive of option five. However, they said that they want a further study. Because everyone agrees that the path has a lot of support, but it also is right in the heart of a historic cemetery. Everyone that I've talked to fully agrees with preservation and protection. Everyone I've talked to fully agrees that this is a historic treasure in Salem. And there is a great deal of interest in doing this methodically, deliberately, and with information that's publicly accessible to all. So I'm merely asking for council support to request additional information on two possible ways of going about doing this, option five or option six. Does it mean that we can't discuss other options down the road? But based on the options that have been presented at the June 22nd meeting, the two, options five and six are the ones that have been getting the most interest from neighborhoods and from individuals within the area. You'll also note that Scan, that's the Southern Central Association of Neighbors, also submitted testimony of supporting options five and six, or at least a letter, perhaps not testimony. And so anyway, that is why I'm speaking to this motion now. And I appreciate everyone's patience with me as we slowly but methodically go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. One, one question. This does not preclude all of the other options that have been looked at so far. This is narrowing down on these just to get additional information on them. But, but there certainly are other options you've laid on the table that have been mentioned. Will those stay in effect, potentially in effect?
They would, because this is a motion requesting additional information, options five and six. You already have in front of you the staff report from June 22nd, which discusses in detail the options one through six. So I'm only asking for more info. This doesn't say this is it and this is the only way we're going to do it. No, definitely not. This is about more info, because government moves so at the speed of light, so, you know.
Right, thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. One, I have, you, you asked one of my questions already. Counselor Nordike, it's been suggested that we are not allowing folks due process on this, on this topic. And as I understand what you've been asking us so far, is just to devote some staff time, to authorize staff time, we have not decided anything or been asked to decide anything on the merits of this at all. And if that time were to ever come before us, if there were ever to be a motion about the merits, people would have an opportunity to come before us, present information on why or why not this is, this is or is not a good idea and all of those sorts of things. So we haven't, the time hasn't, for due process, hasn't even arrived yet. Is that your take on this?
Absolutely. That's exactly right. Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't on mute. I don't want to be that person who talks when they're on mute. I've been there, done that. That's correct. We've had motions requesting information, because this is the opposite of rushing a judgment. This is about involving the public in the information process, the information gathering. And I've encouraged neighborhood associations that are affected by this, invite city staff to come. Have them explain the staff report in greater detail. We had city staff from Public Works come and present the staff report and answer any and all questions in front of a neighborhood association meeting, i.e. want to say it was the July one. And in fact, when we had the staff report on June 22nd, I made a point of not making a motion at that time, because I wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to receive, review and process the information today. So yes, I'm not asking the, my peers on council to make any decision on a path at this point. And yes, of course, there would be opportunity for public comment. And I'll continue to keep my neighborhood associations in the loop. Thanks.
And I need to just clarify something really quickly, not on this topic, but for the mayor's benefit. I made an error a moment ago when you asked for a motion on five A. I gave you the motion for five B. So we have another item that we still need to address prior to this. I apologize. That was completely my error.
Okay. All righty. Oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Anderson, I'm sorry.
First, as, as long as we're all apologizing, I thought we were discussing five A, which is why I asked the city manager to talk about the gathering in the park. So I'm sure we'll get, and that's why the city manager appropriately said, I'm, I'll answer this, but it doesn't seem to relate necessarily to the topic. And that's why, so I'm sorry.
We'll go through five A real quickly then.
Yeah, because we've already talked about it. My, I, I've got two, two things. One is a comment. This has been around since I was, well, before that, but I first started discussing on, I was vice chair of Scan in like 2007 or 2008. And then it was, came back again when I was chair in 2009 through about 2011. There's been a Luba suit, so we've gone through a lot of things. So we are moving slowly here. So I, 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 I agree, we should have some more discussion, because there are some issues on, and, and strong feelings on all sides of this issue, and we need to bring it out. My question to the counselor who made the motion is, if you could elaborate a bit about why you don't even want just an elementary seat of the pants, back of the envelope cost analysis in, from the staff?
Well, I, I want us to, because cost isn't the only consideration, would be the short answer I can give. The cost of constructing a path is just one of the considerations for this. We also have the fact that this is a historic cemetery, that neighborhoods would be impacted. We also know that there are important safety considerations from not having this path. We have testimony in our extensive packet here, where people have pointed out the dangers of having to walk along Liberty, of having to walk along Commercial and so on. And so, you know, I mean, there, we have a great deal of comments. So I know that with something that has a lot of impact, a lot of different feelings about it, this is about going slowly, methodically, like molasses in January. So cost is one of the factors, but it's not the only factor.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're really saying is you want to look at this independent of cost, just to see which is the one that, if there is one, that is potentially most advantageous to all parties?
Well, no, because the motion said that the report, under my motion, the report will provide planning level estimates of the costs. So cost is a part of the motion. It's just not the only consideration.
Oh, of course it, it shouldn't be. I agree with that. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you know my perspectives on this, having actually voted on it at least three times so far. And that because of previous votes, you know, council can never lock a future council into anything, but because of the decisions council made at the time, the development actually changed their layout, which didn't necessarily fit well with trying to, to go back and look at it now versus not looking at any of the other options that are out there. If I could just drop back to the other piece, I, I voted no on five A. So we should really go back and, and take each.
Do it again. We'll do it again.
In, in a delay.
Certainly, but I, Counselor Hoy will be glad to do that.
Good.
Okay. Okay, let's have the recorder call a vote.
Okay, Counselor Nanki?
Nay.
Counselor Leung?
I'm sorry, which one are we on right now? Because I'm looking.
We're on Nordike's staff work.
Item five C.
Thank you. Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
No.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Let's just take, with your permission, I'm going to go back and have Counselor Hoy take us through five A and five B again. Okay, let's start with five A.
My sincere apologies, everybody. I was shuffling paper and obviously I shuffled one few times.
Do it, so it's.
I've still got all this and I'm like, where's the motion? So we're on five A. Give me one moment, please. I apologize. I'll tell you what, I move staff recommendation.
Okay, very good. Second?
Second.
Second by Kazer. A discussion? The recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Nay.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. By B, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Lewis. Hey, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Osik?
Meeting. Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki? Excuse me? Aye. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we'll go to three point two C, pulled by Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Who's seconded? Nanki?
I can.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. I pulled this item not because I have concerns about it. I, in fact, I am very much in support of it. But there were questions that I was hearing from counselors, questions that I had. And I just felt like we needed a little bit more time to clarify some of the detail on this. And I presented you with at least one of those questions earlier, Mr. Powers. I'm hoping you'll take the opportunity to address it when, so we can be really clear what this program entails.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Hoy. It is a lot of pieces to the management of the delinquent utility accounts. And certainly there are questions that we would like to answer, including questions that perhaps haven't been asked yet. So council is fully aware of, of the status of the delinquent accounts, the status of the use of the additional utility assistance funding that council has approved, and then the recommended actions. And a little bit more on, on why we think the recommended action does make sense and, and may very well help people who are currently delinquent. And Director Fernandez can, can take us through that.
So the question, Counselor Hoy, I'm trying to remember, is this the one where you hit the end of the, your rope and you still haven't got any money yet to pay your utility?
Yeah, if you've been referred to the finance department for the one year of payments, the no interest payments, what happens if you reach the end of that year and you still owe money?
Right. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor. The plan is to move all of the amounts that are owed to the utility under this program to a special finance account. And first of all, I want to do that so that anybody that is delinquent, that isn't hanging over their head. So, so just because there's a past delinquent account, we wouldn't be shutting you off now come the end of October, because you owe something. So the finance department will issue 12 equal installment bills. So they'll, so you'll get two bills. You'll get your utility bill and you'll get this bill from the finance department. And we're just going to take the amount owed, divide by 12, no interest, no penalties. Frankly, if at any time you don't pay that bill, then the remainder will be forwarded to the collections, the city's collections agency. We typically don't refer for anything under $25. So, but if at some point you become delinquent on the finance amount, that amount will be referred to collections. Now, we have the $500,000 that council authorized when we first started this. We have had very few takers on that. And our presumption is that because we're not shutting off, nobody is applying for those funds. So we are already in negoti, negotiations and discussions with the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency to be one of the agencies that reviews people, not just for the programs that we have today, but perhaps for, for people that can be qualified because they're out of work or they're, as you say, Counselor Hoy, at the end of the rope, to see if we can use some of those funds, qualify more people with, with the $500,000 that, that the council authorizes. So, so we certainly want to continue to be, we may have to come back to council, but we certainly want to continue to be expansive in the use of that amount. We've made that commitment. The council has, has authorized that commitment, so we want to get people through. But our recommendation is to, is to move forward. The, the data that I received today is, there is about $750,000 in deferred collections from this account of about 2,300 customers, the vast majority of them being residential customers.
And I'm, I take it that you will be reminding those folks of this program once the, once we start the second account, you'll be reminding folks that they have an opportunity to apply for these funds?
Yes. In fact, we'll be sending out the first, if we have to shut off for non-payment, that will not start till November. So we wanted to give ourselves enough time to get the letter notices out to make sure that the system is working, that people understand that if they want to apply for support, that they'll be able to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Director Fernandez, I have two questions for you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
First question, are you providing like language assistance, especially for people where English is not the first language? And my second follow-up question to what's, how we're gonna move forward with this, I gather, shoot, I just lost my second question. I'll think of it in a moment.
All right, let me respond to your first one while you think of your second one. We have been subscribed to a service called Language Line for many years. People call in all the time that, that speak, you know, any of the languages that are spoken in our community, and we are able to obtain a interpreter immediately to use, to be able to interpret for us as we, as we ask questions. And we would never, people get a lot of notice before there's any kind of shut off or any kind of issue. So we certainly want to work with people. Our intent is not, our goal is never to shut off. Our goal is to work with them to make it work in any language.
Thank you.
If I may, I believe the other question that was brought up earlier was what will happen when the 12 months of referral to the finance department comes to an end?
Well, hopefully, the, all the bills will be paid. And if at any point, it's not just the 12 months, if at any point you don't pay, a customer doesn't pay their bill, you know, they fall behind on the, on any of the finance department bills, that amount will be, that outstanding amount will be referred to collections.
Okay.
Now remember my second question. What would you, how is the ease of the application process? Like, is there, is it pretty easy to fill out? Is it a paper-based application, online, or a combination of both?
Yeah, so we don't, Counselor, we do not qualify people into our programs. We use the Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul, and Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. So they, they do the referral. So they often have case management for people that are in need. So I, my understanding is that it's relatively simple, but we do not administer that. As soon as we get a call from any one of the three agencies that qualify customers that say they qualify, then we transfer the money into, into their accounts. But I will tell you that our customer service staff, our customer service manager, as soon as they get any inkling that a customer is in need of help, they are immediately referred to one of the agencies.
Okay. Counselor Nordike.
Hi, thank you. I was just going on to the city's website because I wanted to see how easy it is to find the application for emergency utility assistance. It only took three or four clicks for me to figure it out. One thought might be, once this program takes effect in people, more and more people become interested in it, perhaps temporarily putting it on the City of Salem's homepage banner. I know how on our homepage we have, you know, a series of headlines, so to speak, for things that are very topical. My experience is in talking with people in my ward, a lot of people are not familiar with emergency utility assistance. I don't know why, because I can tell the city is making an effort to get the word out, but, you know, hey, there's always a few folks who are not in the loop, and sometimes many more. Sometimes that's just the tip of the iceberg. I'm glad to hear, as Counselor Leung pointed out, that there is language assistance, because that's the question I had for me. I saw in our materials, there is a draft letter, which is about utility accounts being passed due. It is provided in English only. So I don't know to what extent does the city provide utility account billing statements than any other languages?
We do not, Counselor. If someone requests assistance with translation, then we provide it to them.
Is there anything on the util, I haven't looked that carefully at my utility bill this last month. Is there anything on the utility bill that says, say, habla español, or some other sort of indication that, hey, if English isn't your first language, this is who you call to help? Is that on our information?
You know, I don't look at my utility bill either. I'm on electronic pay. Alicia Blalock is on the call, our administration division manager, and she may, she may know.
Evening, everybody. Yes, we do have a one line that just says if you need assistance in Spanish, and gives you the phone number to call. So that is on the utility bill. And if we want to translate the entire letter, we can also translate the entire letter before we mail it out, the sample that's attached to the staff report.
Okay, and the statement you said, like, if, the statement you just said a moment ago, if you need assistance in Spanish, is that written in English or is it in Spanish?
No, no, in Spanish. Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I figured that's what you meant, but I might as well err to the side of caution. Thank you, folks. Those are all the questions I had.
Counselor Kazer.
Thanks. Just curious if any of the delinquent accounts, if we've contacted them yet about assistance, or no, we haven't done?
No.
Thanks.
No, not at all. And in fact, the reports that I've gotten from our customer service staff is that some people pay. So it's not the same people. A lot of them are, but there are some people that have paid and have come off, new people come on. So there's been some level of people paying and paying off their balances and moving on. So now, we were just on hold pending coming back to council and making this report.
Okay. Am I ready to vote? Hey, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kazer.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Osik.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Anderson, you pulled 3.3B.
Again, I can't get my mouse to move. This is the city-issued laptop. That may be the problem. I, for purposes of discussion, I move the staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Hoy.
I will have to tell you that I've got a bunch of questions I want to ask, and I am not sure which way I want to go on this. So I, that's why I pulled it, to hear what the staff had to say. And I indicated to Director Fernandez that I would have some questions. I sent him an email later this afternoon, earlier this afternoon.
Counselor, one suggestion, as we're listening to the explanation, would you think about whether or not you'd like to postpone this? We heard, for me, this was really fairly new information that we got. I mean, I'd heard a little about this, but maybe give us some time to kind of get out, get a look at the spot, kind of digest what we heard tonight and what the staff's gonna tell us, or do you want to vote it up or down tonight, or what is your-
Well, I don't think if the council agrees with the mayor's suggestion, I wouldn't have an objection to postponement. You know, I, you know, I would be prepared to vote up or down, but if-
Yeah. I just think it'd be, it's just a thought. I just think it'd be helpful. This, the Oberies detailed objection really has only recently arrived. I know if you follow it on a couple of the Facebook sites, you might have seen it within the past week.
Yeah.
But I'm just not sure we'd be ready, really, to make a substantial decision on this. And I'm just talking for myself. I'm not sure I'd be ready to make a substantial-
Counselor Kazer, who has her hand up too on that issue.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Kazer.
Yeah, I would, I would be in favor of that as well. I feel like I heard some new information tonight, even based, even newer than some of the correspondence I had received. So I have no issue with postponing even to the next meeting in 14 days.
Okay.
I will tell you, I've heard the information too. And based on the information I've heard, of course, subject to answers that we might get, you know, my, I'm leaning toward denying the motion.
Sure.
And, you know, if the council wants to postpone, that's fine. And what I would suggest, partly because we've been through some issues already, that I'd be happy to send a series of questions to Director Fernandez, and we could have some answers to us by the next meeting.
Great. You want to make a motion then to postpone this to the next meeting?
I move to postpone my motion to the next meeting.
Second.
Second by Hoy. A discussion? Okay, I'll, oh, Counselor Nordike.
Just remind me which, again, which item number is this one? I didn't quite-
This is 3.3B. This is the Pine Street, Broadway, Pine Street, right turn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Lewis, did you, okay, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kazer.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Osik.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Okay, information reports. Counselor Kazer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of questions on item 6. C. This is the installation of electronic wall sign. And I don't, I'm not calling it up or anything. I just had a couple of questions for Lisa Anderson Ogilvie. We talked earlier today, and I was hoping that she might be able to kind of answer publicly the questions that I had about this. Because these electronic signs cause a lot of heartburn, I know, for people, mostly because of how bright they are at night, and they move, and the graphics move, and all that stuff. So Lisa, could you, there's two things if you could speak to. The first is, this, the application itself is just for a permit to do this in the Greenway, but the applicant still has other things to do before they can actually go and construct their sign. If you could speak to that. And the second thing to speak to is just the difference between, like, this sign versus like a billboard. Could this sign be used for advertising, or could the owner take revenue or money to post advertisements? Could you speak to those, please?
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Lisa Anderson Ogilvie, your planning administrator. The application that you're referencing tonight is a Willamette Greenway permit. So anytime something's built with inside the Greenway, we review it for its impacts on the river. So mainly what you can see if you're on the river. And so this application was reviewed to see if someone, you know, boating down the river is gonna see this giant sign. It's not visible from the river because of topography, the location of the bridge, the off-ramps, you won't be able to see it, you know, from the river. So the, that's why this application was approved. They will also need to get a sign permit, and that's where we review signs for, you know, the size, how they're attached to the building, how many signs they have, you know, the brightness of the electronic sign, that kind of thing. That's an administrative process, so they're not asking for any adjustments or variances. So the sign is permitted on that building, the size of sign, an electronic sign. So they will go through a permitting process, but it won't be one available for the public to comment on. As to your question about a billboard, they're not allowed to have a billboard here. So this is a sign for advertising for the businesses that are in this building. So they'll be able to advertise for themselves, or for things that they're sponsoring, but they won't be able to sell, you know, signage to other businesses on this sign. So that's the purpose of it.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson Ogilvie, it, when I first looked at this, it looked like the sign was directed to the parking lot. But then I reoriented myself, and it looks like the sign is really directed to people coming off the off-ramp, off the bridge, to get Edgewater and Wallace. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, and so, you know, I can see some potential problems with that. If you're coming down, down the bridge, and you're looking, it's kind of the equivalent of texting from the sign. You're looking at the sign, not paying attention to driving, and all of a sudden, boom, you're hitting the car ahead of you. So I understand that, that's, there's no way to address that in this. But I see the same problem on the, the building on Front Street, when you're turning the corner on Front Street to get the commercial and, you know, go by City Hall there. That sign is always out there and big and everything else. And then you said something about they could only advertise their business, not anybody else's business. And then you said something about, or something they are sponsoring. Now, what do you mean by that? Let's say that business is sponsoring a softball tournament. Do they get a talk about the softball tournament? Let's say they're sponsoring a political rally. Do they get a talk about the political rally?
Well, that's probably a question better directed to the city attorney. We did have some complaints about the sign on Front Street advertising for things that weren't part of their business. And we determined that when they were sponsoring an event, that it was covered as something that they could advertise for on their sign. That came from the city attorney's office. There's a lot of case law around signage, so I'm not sure I'm the best one to answer that. I will just say, it's just, the sign code is very clear that you can't do off-site advertising. So it's very clear that it can't be a billboard. But there's a lot of gray area around the sign code and laws for sign codes.
Well, here's another gray area. I believe if I now got the building located, that was a building that for a long time during an election cycle, had a political sign up. So let's say that building wanted to put a political sign up again. Could they do that on this electronic sideboard?
We would need to consult, consult with the city attorney to answer that.
That's different than talking about something that isn't directly related to their business. So now I'm looking at Dan.
So generally speaking, no. You can advertise, according to our code, you know, you can't do off-site advertising on your signs. There is some case law in the last couple of years that's kind of put that into question, but we haven't made any final determinations on that. But generally speaking, the Oregon Constitution is more protective of free speech than the US Constitution, and you cannot regulate the sign based on its content, period. It doesn't matter whether it's political speech, commercial speech, or any other type of speech.
So what you're basically telling me is they could put, they could put a political sign up?
I would have to take a look at that. I don't think so.
That's good.
Okay.
I understand. We're back to the same issue with the school there. You know, it's a technical procedure, the criteria have been met. So you're right, you know, once you get through all this, they come to you with a permit, you know, you request for a big sign, you won't really have anything to do except to measure it and look at it and everything else. So I just, it's in a spot where it'll be easily seen. So I'm sure we'll all be watching it. Well, those of us who use that bridge, who don't use the Union Street Bridge, which I use when I go over to West Salem.
And who read political signs. Chris Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Anderson Ogilvie, could you, it seems to me, a couple of years ago, we had, or maybe it was longer than that, we had a revision of the sign code come before us, and we kind of had a couple of fits and starts with it, and ultimately we didn't act on it. Where are we at with that process?
Yeah, we've started working on that again, and we hope to bring something back to the council in the fall or early winter. You know that you added a sign code inspector position to the planning division, and part of that is that we wanted to clean up the sign code and make sure that we are enforcing the code that we have and that we have a code that we want. So we will be bringing something back to the council, trying to address the temporary signs, the illegal signs, and generally the size and amount of signs that are allowed. So that would be an opportunity if there's areas of town that the council wants us to allow smaller signage, that we could address through that code amendment.
Thank you. It seems like we're kind of out of control on Lancaster these days in terms of signs on the side of buildings, temporary signs, signs, you know, with the stakes, and you name it. It's pretty out of control out here.
Okay. Counselor Lewis.
Couple of real quick comments. As somebody who does drive across the Marion Street Bridge on a daily basis, I'm not too concerned about accidents. The traffic is going relatively slow almost all the time. It'll be nice to have somebody to look at. And secondly, right after you come off the bridge, a little bit north on Wallace, is a huge gigantic billboard sign that is used every political season by- that is used every political season by somebody.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Any other, anything else on information reports? Very good. We have one person left to testify.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I do have one. It's just a minor thing. It's on 6C. That's the hospital's request that was granted to divide their acres they own on by the state, by the old state hospital. Do they have any plans for this? So do they, do we know? Or I know it doesn't make any difference on this. I'm just kind of curious.
They haven't submitted any other plans besides the partition at this point.
And I see Mr. Clifford, I'm sorry, I can't see your whole first name, but I think you're the person who probably wants to speak to us. And I want to commend you, sir, for your hanging in here for this lawn council meeting that probably is boring to everybody else, but it's, everybody but us, but it's extremely thrilling to us. And we're lucky, you're lucky we postponed the issue on the intersection because that would have been another half hour or 45 minutes. So thank you very much for your patience, sir.
No problem.
Is everybody done? Good. Clifford, you're on. You'd introduce yourself.
Absolutely. My name is Clifford Ipler Rodriguez. I'm in Ward 6. I'd like to direct my initial remarks to the council as well as the city manager, and specifically talking about city council meetings and accessibility to them. During city council meetings, we conduct the city business. We shed light on that for public consumption. And currently, the process for city council meetings to receive accommodation, like translation services, require an interested party to reach out to city staff 48 hours in advance of a meeting. Now, with those instructions, those are actually buried down deep into the agenda. In today's agenda, it was eight pages down for those basic instructions to reach out to the staff. Specifically, what I want to address is recommending that the city follow Salem Kaiser School District's lead in making both the agenda and the speeding available in Spanish as a matter of course. Now, while I understand it may add a burden to, a financial burden to the city, it's important to note that one in five residents in Salem are identified as Latinx. And so the real question is, what is the cost to our community when these meetings are not accessible? You know, you pass laws, you pass code, you are talking about changing entire neighborhoods as evidenced in this meeting. And so that's, I'm urging the council to take the lead. You did a pilot last city council meeting with Capital Community Media where there was a separate Spanish link. No one had to ask. And while the numbers probably, I think, at one point it's out five viewers, that's five people who are now engaged rather than not having access to the information. I do have one other quick topic to address, and that's the recent violence on our streets. Over the past two weeks, there have been incidents, including a five-year-old leaving an event at Riverfront Park who got pepper sprayed while in their own car by white extremists. I feel, and I believe this, this is evident by the conduct of people within this community, that hate is on the rise here. People are emboldened by inaction and by a lack of accountability by the Salem Police Department and our leadership in the city. I'm asking for more. Now, obviously, you've heard a lot from constituents across the city, but I'm asking for actual bold leadership, including decrying hate. Now, I understand that there's a lot of reforms and they take time. But I'm actually asking you guys to be audible in decrying these actions as well as the intimidation that we see on our streets. This isn't a Salem I want to live in. I don't want to live in where people are carrying guns around with the purpose to intimidate citizens who are taking their publicly protected rights to protest, to engage, to lift up this community. So I'm asking you to actually be vocal in this, and I yield the rest of my time.
Great. Thank you very much, Clifford. Any, any questions? Alrighty. Yes, Councilor Nordike?
I just want to thank you, sir, for speaking up. I know that this is probably your first time speaking at a city council meeting, and I sincerely appreciate you doing so. I recognize that white supremacy is alive and well, and there are several peers on council, myself included, who have commented on this before. It's completely unacceptable. We have commented on this, and yet we still continue to see episodes in our community. One of the episodes we commented on before was a gentleman flying a Nazi flag out the back of his car in Salem. So I hear what you're saying, and I really appreciate you putting that forward. And I'm very curious about the notion of having more accessibility in the Spanish language. And I'll look forward to following up with city staff on that because I agree that we need to do better. Thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you again, Clifford. Okay, our meeting is adjourned.